Okay, good evening, everyone. I am Shannon Rutherford, the Town Planner for Farmington, and this is our Town Plan and Zoning Meeting. I will start the evening with a roll call of Commission members. Matthew Bandle.
Here.
Robert Cantor.
Here.
Rogia Afshar.
Present.
David St. Germain.
Here.
Scott Halston.
Here.
Liz Sanford.
Here.
And Mike Tucci.
Here.
And I will note for the record that Alternates Bruce Polsky and Kyler Zimmerman are absent this evening. Mr. Chair, it's all yours.
Very good. Thanks, Shannon. Welcome, everyone, to the May 20 Town Plan and Zoning Meeting. Do I need to stall for a second, Liz, while you get ready to read the legal notice?
I'm good.
All right. Fire away, please.
Okay. Notice is hereby given that the Town Plan and Zoning Commission will hold a hybrid in-person and online public hearing on Monday, May 20, 2024, at 7:00 p.m. in the Town Hall Council Chambers on the following applications. Specialty Transportation, Inc., application for special permit and site plan approval for school bus transportation facility at 150 New Britton Avenue, C1 Zone. Farmington West Estates Limited Partners, application for 10-lot subdivision of Governor's Pride off Snowberry Lane, Phase 6A, AH Zone. Interested parties are encouraged to participate in this hybrid public hearing. Participation in person is at 1 Monteith Drive, Town Hall, Town Council Chambers, or online participation is via the link in the meeting in the Town Hall's web, Town of Farmington's website. A copy of this proposal is found online or by calling the Planning and Department at Farmington Town Hall. And dated at Farmington, Connecticut, the 2nd day of May, 2024, Town Plan and Zoning Commission.
Thank you, Liz. Appreciate it. So we have one new business item. We've got one application to accept from CPD Properties and 342 Colt Highway LLC. Can we get a motion in a second, please?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the application for special permit and site plan approval for a new fuel service station, convenience store, and quick-service restaurant, and schedule a public hearing with a recommended hearing date of June 24, 2024, for CPD Properties at 342 Colt Highway LLC. I'm sorry, 342 Colt Highway.
Second.
All those in favor? I opposed. Motion passes. Thank you. All right, moving along through our two public hearings this evening, just a few sort of guidelines to help us all through that process and for us to all understand how it would work. We're going to ask the applicants to present to the Commission first. We'll go through each Commissioner and have them ask their questions. Then we'll open it up to the public, first to those of you that are in the room that would like to speak or against a particular application. And we'll also have Shannon help us out with the folks that are online. We'll ask the applicants to hold any response to the comments or questions until we've heard all of the public comment. And then we'll sort of go from there. We ask that as you make your comment, we appreciate, we have a good crowd here tonight, and we appreciate that, we ask you to try to keep those comments limited to five minutes. And if you feel like you're going to say something that's the same as what people in front of you say, it's okay to say ditto. I agree with what they said. Just to keep things moving along, we're, this group is all volunteers, and we want to respect your time as well as ours. So just a few thoughts as we get into the public hearing process. So with that said, let's hit our first public hearing, which is Specialty Transportation, Inc. Mr. Hoeb.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. My name is Christian Hoeb. My office is located at 314 Main Street here in Farmington. So as you heard from the call, this is a special permit and site plan application for a school bus transportation company at 150 New Britton Avenue. With me this evening are Michael Turner, who's the Vice President of Operations of Specialty Transportation, Bennett Grossman, who's the President of Specialty Transportation, if anyone has any questions for him. Also available are the property owners, James Dooley and Michael Belial. So procedurally, where are we? Well, the application was delivered to staff. The notices are complete. The plans and information have been timely delivered to staff with recent updates even up to today. The sign was posted and maintained, notices were published. And throughout the process, I've had a number of occasions to speak to the Town Planner, Mrs. Rutherford, about the status of this application to get updates. I generally would say we've been very cooperative. We've allowed members of staff onto the property. We've tried to have a free flow of information as this process unfolds. We are the new bus company for Farmington. And this came about with bidding, I think, in December of last year, but the results didn't come until the spring. And so we've moved very quickly now to ascertain the best location and get together a plan. So there are a couple little, I wouldn't say discrepancies, but little bumps that I'll discuss as we go through. Nothing significant. I think we're in pretty good shape on this application. It's for 44 full-size school buses, 11 mid-sized school buses. And we reported in our initial narrative, 24 minivans. Then in your plans, you'll see we recite 15 minivans. Based on my discussion with the owners tonight, it's actually 20 minivans, and we think we can accommodate that for parking. We also have some small office space in the building that's located on the property and a use of a garage. So I'm going to now zoom out. I wanted to just bring you sort of up to date. The site itself is 6.47 acres. It is a C1 Zone. And I don't know if you've had a C1 Zone recently, but according to your regulation, a C1 Zone contemplates manufacturing, fabricating, processing, warehousing facility, and distribution center, trucking company, concrete batching operations. And I would submit to you, the proposed use in this application is far less intense than those articulated in that regulation. This is the parking of school buses. So the site is bounded northerly by Rivercrest, easterly by Union Place and Farmington Heights, and then five acres, which is also owned by the owner of this property. Then southerly, there are the rails to Trails. There's Forest Court. And then there are two vacant lots owned by Moran Tree, and there's Forest Street residences. And westerly, there are the apartments owned by Barberino. I think it's known as Barwood, and there's a residence, Roswig, which is .32 of an acre. So just very generally, we've looked at the plan, and I think staff would agree. We have properly-sized parking spaces. There is an adequate turning radius. The property will be shared with the current tenant, which is Choice Landscaping, II LLC. There's also a lease on the property for a large propane tank, which has been there forever. And I'm not aware of any of the other portion of the property being leased. It's not anticipated, at least at this time. In a moment, I'm going to turn it over to Michael Turner to talk about the use and specifically the scheduling, how the buses come in and go out. I did want to point something out, and I know this Commission is experienced and they would ask this question anyway. So I want to mention it upfront. We don't have a lighting plan, not because we're disregarding the lighting. This has all happened so quickly, and lighting plans take some time. You have to sort of bring in an expert, typically a manufacturer or distributor. They give you an assessment. We do not anticipate floodlighting the property for security purposes. We're really thinking along the lines of lighting for safe access for the employees. And while we're basking in the joy of light now, it's in a heartbeat. It'll be December. The sun will set at around 2:00 p.m. and then rise at about 10:00 a.m. So we know our folks will be in the dark. And what I would submit to you is that we're, I think, if you're satisfied with the questions and the information is provided, you close the hearing. We could submit a lighting plan. You could take it up in Planner's Report if you wanted to. If you were alarmed, you could then ask for a hearing on the lighting. But we don't think it's going to be the kind of lighting that will trigger any of that. So I just wanted to get that out upfront because it would be a question that would be in my mind. Lighting is always something to be considered by this Commission. And with buses, you might think, oh, there's going to be a ton of lighting because of catalytic converters or vandalism to buses. And it has not been my client's custom to do that kind of lighting in other properties. It's just, it doesn't, doesn't stop anything. So I'm going to turn it over to Michael Turner to kind of talk about the proposed use, the allocation of the spaces, and then I'll be back in just a minute. Five minutes.
Hi, thank you for having me. I'm Michael Turner, Vice President of Specialty Transportation. Just want to talk about the operations of Specialty Transportation and school bus companies in general. I know there's concerns about noise early in the morning and noise late at night. We're running school bus transportation for, obviously, school hours. In the morning, the drivers are starting their vehicles. Obviously, in colder weather, they're starting them earlier than in warmer weather where they can start them. They do have to do a pre-trip inspection on their buses to make sure everything's working, lights, doors, all that, all that sort of thing. But they're not idling for long times. The benefit of diesel vehicles, and we have 44 of them. Forty are for transportation, four of them are spares. So not all 44 are starting, but 40 of them are for transportation for the Town of Farmington. There's benefits to them. There's filters on them. It's not the black smoke that you see coming out of buses that you used to see back in the day. They're filtered. The emissions are way down on that. They're idling. The vehicles that we're purchasing are brand-new or fairly new. So they're not, you know, they might not be 2024s or 2025s, 2022s or 2023s are the vehicles that we're purchasing. And they, the specific engines they have on them, and specifically the heater that they have on them, even in winter months, they warm up in five minutes. So that is not normal to normal buses. And all their buses obviously took longer to warm up. Even with the bras on front, they took longer to warm up. So they're not idling as long. Another feature with these buses, these vehicles, I should say, the school buses that we have are, if the driver starts them and just forgets, or whatever might happen, they got busy doing something in the yard, the vehicle's only idle for 10 minutes, and they automatically shut off. So we're not looking at long idle times for these type of vehicles. And for noise factor, you know, the vehicles are leaving at approximately 6:00, 6:30 in the morning because they have to pick up the kids, depending on, you know, how far out from the location that they're going to bring them back to Farmington High School, which is the first tier of the drop-offs. They, they're leaving that time in the morning, and they're doing middle school, upper elementary school, and elementary schools, and they're coming back around approximately 9:00, 9:30 in the, in the morning. And then that's when the backup beepers, the beeping happens for anyone that might be in the area or close to the area that may hear it. They're not all coming back at the same time, so it's not 40 buses beeping at the same time, obviously. And we're all, we're backing them in. In the morning, when we're leaving, they're all pulling forward, so there's no backup beepers, and we're just pulling out of the yard. Like, like you said, there's plenty of turning radius, and we're leaving the yard. The afternoon schedule is, you know, depending on dismissal times, obviously, the high school's around. They vary from town, and this is our sixth contract, so I'm guessing around 2, between 2:00 and 2:30. They'll be leaving the yard. They don't have to do a pre-trip at that time, so the buses aren't idling as long. They're, as long as they're not driving a different vehicle at that time, they don't have to do a pre-trip. So they're just getting in their bus. They're making sure their lights work, and they're leaving within a couple minutes out of the yard. And again, they're coming back around anywhere between 4:30 and 5:30. They're coming back to the yard, and that's where the backup beepers will be. For parking purposes, in our proposal, we're looking to have our large vehicles, which are the big buses. So everyone knows what a big bus looks like, right? Those buses will be parked along the, let's see, northwest?
South.
No, south, yeah. Yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome.
South side backed in. They will be parked there, and then our smaller vehicles, our employees, will be moving the vehicle out of the way and starting their pre-trip and parking their personal vehicle in that spot. We do that in a lot of our yards. We, again, we have five other contracts, and in four of them, we, the employees do have to move the vehicle out and put their personal vehicle in that spot. A lot of bus companies for school transportations do do that because of, obviously, you need more parking area than you need office space, right? So that, so drivers are accustomed to that. We train them on it. We let them know, you know, what they need to do. And so we need to move the vehicle out. They put their vehicle in. Then they do the pre-trip like I spoke about before, earlier, in the morning, before they go out on their run. And then they go out on their run, and when they come back, it's just moving their vehicle and then putting the vehicle back in the spot. Same thing in the afternoon. They would come back. Most of our employees for all of our contracts have, well, I shouldn't say most. A lot of our employees have their own vehicles, especially, specifically the drivers. So they're putting their vehicle in that, in that position. There are some employees that we have that are monitors that don't have a vehicle, either to take public transportation or get a ride in from a driver, which obviously wouldn't take up a parking spot. And I think that's all I have for the operations of the daily operations, I should say, for, for our business.
Thank you, Michael. If your people have questions, Commission Member have questions, and they'll be back up. A couple other notes. In terms of the building, we're not anticipating doing repairs on these buses and having heavy equipment in there. There'll be nothing more than routine maintenance. So I don't believe we anticipate even oil changes, do we? No? Shaking their head, no. So that's an acknowledgement, no. I do want to point out, there was a, staff had raised a question about the turning radius onto New Britton Avenue because you come out of the driveway, and you have to make a turn, and there's oncoming traffic. There was a video completed, which demonstrates that the bus can clear it and into the street properly. Of course, that's one single video. We're, of course, committed to, if there are any sightline issues, trimming trees if that's necessary, and it might be. You know, trees grow, vegetation grows. We, we certainly don't want an accident coming out of our driveway. So, especially with a school bus. So I think that's, oh, I did put together, and it's rudimentary, a handwritten chart, and I'm happy to submit it. You won't be impressed because it's got my handwriting. But I asked our planner to kind of give me distances to any properties surrounding this location compared to where we'll be parking, and it's significant. There's nothing really close. And I think you all know, the prior bus company, M&amp;J, was on New Britton Avenue. There were some residences nearby, I think Maple Ridge. Is that correct?
Thank you.
I think so, that had concerns here, and looking at the distances, they're significant. So I'm happy to pass that in. Please don't make fun of me. There's highlighting and handwritten notes for what it's worth, but there is information on it. It might be helpful to you. So may I just approach and?
Yeah, start at that end, and then they can pass it.
We'll pass it along.
Thank you. Thank you.
So I'm sure you will have some questions, but I think that's, we're trying to cover all the bases quickly for you and get the information out. So we're open to any questions you have.
Sounds good. Thank you. Matt, start with you.
All right. So two main questions. First is the parking. I just want to be clear. So 44 full-size, 11 mid-sized buses and 20 minivans?
Yes.
All right. So the minivans and the midsize are going to be hot-swapping the parking spaces?
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay, so that's 44 full buses of people. Let's assume each one has a car, so 44 spots. Are they all there at the same time?
The buses?
The, yeah, the cars, the 44 full-size buses.
I would think so. Is that correct? Yes. Yes.
Okay.
Step right up, and they'll want to hear from you, not me.
They are, yes. Okay. And there's 12 spaces at the office. Is that sufficient for the office staff?
It is. Our office staff is planned on having three full-time office staff that are in the office, so we have extra spots for them. There's, there is one mechanic that is there. We're not sure on the hours on the mechanic yet because, obviously, he can't do any sort of part of his job when the vehicles are on the road. Excuse me. But yeah, it's only three, three or four office staff, including the mechanic.
Okay. And it looks like you have over 50 spots. If you don't include the hot swap spots, you still have over 50 spots. You're right. You have a mid-parking lot of 16, a south parking lot of 20, and then another, that's a little bit off to the driveway, of 14. So I think you're covered from a parking perspective. The next question I have is, Shannon, do you have that video? You show that video?
Well, assume, assuming I can get it to run from.
Okay.
So there's.
That's a wide turn. And this car gets pretty close. I mean, there is, you know, some concern with that right-hand turn.
Both vehicles had crossed, so both the red SUV and the black truck had crossed. Their tires, they've scooched over. And it could just be because they were surprised to see the bus come out and make the turn, so.
So maybe some tree clearing to clear the line of sight would be, would be a good thing?
Yeah, that was one thing, and I mean, I don't think it would be too much to expand the apron a little bit as well, and that might be part of the answer.
Okay.
Thank you.
All set.
Oh, thanks, Matt. Bobby.
All right, just a couple things. You're only going to have one mechanic on site?
Correct.
So where's all the bus maintenance going to be taken care of?
So our major maintenance outside of preventive maintenance, so preventive maintenance is through DMV. We have to do certain checks every three months, six months, and every X amount of miles for every vehicle. Our, our major maintenance will be done in either our Avon office, our Hartford office, or our Berlin location. They can handle all of those major repairs. The mechanic on site will be doing minor repairs. So checking brakes, checking, you know, checking to making sure tire's okay, changing tires, that sort of thing.
Got you. Okay. Yeah, that was my biggest concern is I know there's routine maintenance being done.
Yeah.
And then I missed the hours in the, in the morning. Do you have a rough idea what time they're going to start filtering in?
Well, it depends on, again, how far they go out on town or outskirts of town, I should say. Obviously, we're in Unionville, so the other side of Farmington's a little further away. We don't have the routes yet from the town of Farmington, but there's going to be a certain amount of buses that are starting a little bit earlier so that they can pick up the students. How the contract reads is the student can't be on the bus for more than 40, more than 45 minutes. So if bell time is around 7:15, that could change next year, the following year, whatever it might be. So if drop-off or bell time is around 7:15, if you go backwards 45 minutes, you're looking at 6:45 is the first pickup. And then again, you have to look at, yeah, so 6:30, correct. You have to look at how long it takes from our yard to that first pickup and then start that 45 minutes. So you're looking at a portion of buses leaving probably around 6:00 a.m., a portion around 6:15, and a portion around 6:30.
That's what I was figuring. Okay. After-school buses?
Yep.
For sports activities and all that, we obviously know that sometimes the sports run longer than expected. But how many buses are you anticipating having running that type of route?
Well, that depends on the season, right? So fall sports are, you know, there's more buses in the fall, and there's more buses in the spring, and winter is kind of a slower season, just from our experience in our other contracts. And it also depends on if they have a night game away and coming back. Those are infrequent, very infrequent, I should say. So you could have a bus that's coming back around 7:30, 8 o'clock at night. Usually, the games start, even night games start around 6 o'clock p.m. Games, depending on what sport it is, run anywhere from an hour and a half to two hours, and then obviously, depending on distance. But I would highly doubt that there's many buses that are coming back after 8:30, 9 o'clock. And if there are, they're very, very infrequent.
So worst-case scenario, we're talking 9:00 p.m., and what do you think, six buses?
For the entire school year? Yeah, I think that's a high number, but that's probably, I'd start with that number, and then we'd be lower than that.
As far as that turn goes and the site and all that, I was watching the video. It could be a shock factor, because if you watch the bus, it never crosses over the yellow line, which is kind of important. And you don't know where the bus driver's coming out. Obviously, as they get more familiar with it, they may end up crouching over to the left side to make that swing a little better. But I would consider, you know, doing some trimming up and then check the MUTCD. It'll tell you what you need for site distances based on the speed.
Yep.
And then you can go from there.
Yeah.
Other than that, I've got no questions. It seems like you're working pretty good diligently with the town to get everything taken care of, so.
Thanks, Bob. Rogia?
Thank you to both of you, Mr. Hoeb and Mr. Turner, for your presentations. Just a few petty questions. Mr. Hoeb, maybe this is for you. So now that we don't have a bus company in Farmington, where do we get our buses from, from different towns?
Oh, I think M&amp;J is probably still under contract.
Yeah.
Oh, oh, oh.
Yeah, they're still, they have to complete their contract. They were zooming up my street early this morning, so they're still going.
Okay, thanks. So about the minibuses, why were the numbers changed so many times? So I heard it was.
So it wasn't the minibuses that changed. It was the minivan. So I think we had, yeah. So the minivans, which are seven-passenger, basically caravans, they're Kias, but, you know, they're a seven-passenger minivan. I don't know why the numbers changed. The contract calls for 20. I don't know if we had it wrong when we first initially put it in. I'm not sure.
Okay. And so if the Commission agrees to this and approves this, you are going to keep the number of buses and minivans and minibuses the same? You're not adding up to them, to the numbers, correct? So they're going to remain?
So we're keeping the numbers as the contract calls for.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. We wouldn't put more vehicles in there for other contracts where this yard is just for specifically Farmington Public Schools.
Thanks. That is it for me for now.
Thanks, Rogia. Liz?
Okay, one, just kind of a point of interest. How long is a full-size school bus?
Um, I, that's a great question.
Uh-oh.
I always have to Google it. I believe, I believe, I believe it's around 40 feet. I believe it's around 40.
Oh, it is on there.
Yeah. But the.
It just got added in today.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, so the.
40, 8, and then a van.
Yeah, there's the big tail on it. I call it the tail, from the back tire over, so we can park if you're pulling back and you have clearance over. Yeah, you can pull it back further.
Okay. That was just kind of a curiosity.
Yeah.
And my other question about hours of usage. And my other question about hours of usage, uh, any weekend usage? I know maybe fall football games on a Saturday?
Yeah, so for for contract, um, usage, there there may be some weekend. So sporting events would be a perfect example, um, but we don't have any other vehicles there that would be doing anything outside of the Farmington contract, so we wouldn't be doing wedding shuttles or anything like that on Saturdays or Sundays.
Okay, so it's just school use?
It is, yeah, this 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 yard would just be for school usage, yes.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Dave?
Um, so I'm thinking about the beeping noise, and you've talked about when that happens, like, I'm a rip-off-the-band-aid-really-fast person.
Yeah.
And I would rather hear all the beeping at once, and I can't do that.
Yeah.
About how long are we thinking of hearing beeping?
So I can't tell you right now, because we don't have, we don't serve the contract. I can go off of our other contracts, and usually our vehicles are back within like a ten-minute window. Um, so they're obviously beeping and backing up in that ten-minute window. There may be an outlier that may be beeping, you know, fifteen minutes outside of the first beep. Um, but it's not a long duration of beeping, because they're pulling in, they're they're going to their spot, and then it's kind of over with, and there is a lot of beeping at the same time, because when you're parking one end to the other end, and then you're double-stacking as they're all coming in the same time, especially when schools all go in the same time and they're kind of in the same area, uh, they're coming back around the same time. So if I had to guess, I would guess around ten minutes with an outlier of maybe another, you know, five minutes later, there's another beep. That's just my guess, though.
So, so I imagine it's forty buses, right, forty-four?
Yeah.
Yeah, so imagining forty-four buses, we're not going to get them all in ten minutes, right?
Uh, you'd be surprised.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have twenty-five in Avon, and they they all come back to that yard, even after afternoon drops off, dropping kids off at random, you know, addresses or corners in the town of Avon. They're all back within that ten-minute window. It's pretty amazing.
All right. Um, and also, I'm imag- I'm just trying to imagine too, because it looks like they're very tightly packed in there.
They are.
Yeah. Um, and imagining people parking their cars, moving their cars, and I'm just not sure, like, can you talk about how that works?
So the bu- the the big buses are tightly packed in. That is very true, but they're not putting their cars there, so.
They're not using those spots for the cars?
They're not using their spots for the cars. Yeah, so the minivan, which you have to actually open a door and have clearance to be able to get out. Um, you know, I like to open my door all the way, so I can, you know, kind of slide out of a car. Um, the the buses don't need that much clearance. So a bus is about eight feet across, even with the with the side mirrors. Um, I don't know what we put the spots at, I think.
They're showing at eleven feet.
Okay, eleven, so we're giving ourselves plenty of clearance. Um, but with the big buses, I mean, you're opening the door and you can kind of walk out, and it's not going, oop, I just hit the microphone. It's not going out and hitting the bus on the side. Um, so i- 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 you need less room there. So I do agree with the with the minivans and all that stuff, but we have proper parking for those vehicles where the where the individuals are parking their car there, so I don't think it would be an issue there.
All right, and I just want to say, I was really glad to hear the buses shut off after ten minutes. You know, I'm thinking more of the exhausts, and I know they've got filters and everything, but.
Yeah.
I was happy to hear that. Thank you.
Mike?
Hi, thank you for your presentation. I'll piggyback off of that, and I just wanted some clarification. If the buses are idling, let's say, you know, there's a car accident, plus that's a weight in winter behind for traffic. Where, do they keep running with the heat on for the kids, or?
So, yes, if they're idling in neutral with a parking brake on, there's no parking in a full-size school bus, by the way, in case no one knew that. There's no gear that puts it in park. It stays in neutral with a parking brake. Um, that's what shuts the vehicle off, but if they're in drive with your foot on the pedal, um, the vehicle will still run, so that the kids aren't cold, obviously, in the winter.
Okay.
Yeah.
And my other question was, your day-to-day maintenance, do you guys typically wash the buses once a week? Is it an everyday thing? Um, thinking about in the winter, do you guys like hose them down the undercarriage? Or something that?
So with, um, yards or lots like this, um, we don't, uh, wash the vehicles on-site unless we hire a company that comes in with the mats that go underneath, and they collect all the wastewater and all that stuff. Uh, yeah, so what, so will, when we're washing vehicles, specifically in the winter with the salt and the sand and all that fun stuff, um, we'll bring them to another location and wash them in the middle of the day between, you know, obviously, run hours. We'll we'll shuttle them there. Um, we have, uh, pe- employees that do washing for us. They'll wash the vehicle and they'll bring them back. So it's not the full fleet on one day. It's a couple, a couple buses per day that they'll bring over and they'll and they'll wash them. So that's how we do it, um, because obviously we can't wash, you know, without an oil-water separator and all that fun stuff. Um, so either we hire a company to come in, which we did when we had the Hartford contract, which was years ago. We used to do that. Um, and now we bring them to a lot that has that already built in.
Okay, thank you. No further questions.
Thank you as well for the presentation. I do have a few questions as well. So the, where the buses are double-parked, I guess, for lack of a better term, is that the south end? I'm still turned around.
It is, it's south, so this is, I can.
So.
There's the area.
How big are those spaces? They've got to be more than eighty feet, right?
Hmm, the length is about eighty feet.
Yep. So the length, if we're talking about paved areas, eighty feet, but we also, I believe, you can probably tell me, we get, because the tires, because the overhang of the back of the bus is overhanging over Okay, yeah, we pick up about nine feet, so it's eighty feet. The bu- two buses together are eighty feet, and then you also have that additional nine feet.
Okay, so there was information in the, and I believe this is where there's a buffer that you're going to put in behind as well, is that right? Is that where it's going, Arbividee buffer? And there's enough space for that to go in, considering the need for the space for the buses?
Can you, sorry, can you come up to the microphone? Sorry. And we're going to need your name and, uh, business address, that's fine.
All right. Good, good evening, uh, James Dooley, one of the property owners at one fifty New Britton Avenue. Um, you can see the row of Arbivides. The balance of that space behind the skirt of the bus is also roughly nine feet, um, which will leave sufficient room for plantings of vegetation in that area.
And there are plans as part of this to put in, I think it was Arbividee, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Um, I think the last question I had was, I'm looking at, and maybe it's not the best, like, Google map the property, maybe that's not the best way to do it, but there's some residential directly across the street, I believe, from the, from the exit and entrance to the property.
There are.
So I get a little worried about lights, early in the morning and late at night, shining into the windows of that property. Any thoughts about anything that we can do to mitigate that?
I don't have a quick answer.
Okay.
I mean, I think it would be something we could look at, but, uh, I don't know that those are are those the condos or the apartments?
I believe it's a couple condo buildings, Mr. Hobbit.
I'd have to look at what's in front of their property. I don't think we can put anything on on their property, and I'm not sure what we can put in the street.
Yeah.
Prevent that. I'm willing to hear any suggestions.
Okay. Just a thought as we continue the conversation, so.
I hadn't considered it.
Um.
Certainly, anyone along New Britton Avenue is familiar with the buses going up and down, that's for sure.
Yeah, I think, I feel like the difference in this case, though, is you've got the buses heading out, lights shining directly in clusters more, maybe more than what happened with the current facility there.
I don't disagree.
Um, last question I had was, I get, there's a couple other businesses as well that share this property, is that right? A propane company and a local choice facility, it's, can you just walk us through their access and they're they're putting you up on the stand again here?
Oh, wait till we pull the plan view back up.
Yeah, they're street-level apartments, it would seem.
All right.
What is it?
You want to zoom out so we can see the propane tank? So in the, in the back left here on plan, we have a propane tank. Um, it's, it's simply um, filling the propane tank with a truck that will come in. They keep no office staff on site. They occupy no space in the building. Um, in the, in the past, um, running twelve months, I've seen that truck twice. So it's not like it's, you know, a daily thing, so. Um, the other property, uh, local choice landscaping, um, is going to have ten thousand square feet in the space in the building, um, and what's left of that business will occupy ten thousand square feet of the building. Um, and then also another seven, six hundred of office space, um, and then the balance of the remaining parking spaces.
So do they use the parking spaces on the?
Correct, correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
So any, any runover equipment, um, will be stored inside the building.
Okay. Got it. Okay, appreciate it. Thank you very much. I think that's all my questions at this point.
The only other thing I want to just add to the the main discussion is we're working under the special permit. You're all very familiar with the criterion of the special permit. I looked at it again today. I think we really fit the requirements of the special permit, and rather than me reading through them and putting everyone to sleep, I, we just encourage you to refresh your memory and and compare it to the application you've heard today. We think we need it, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hobbit, appreciate that. All right, this is a public hearing. Um, so I'd like to open it up now to to individuals in the room. If anybody would like to speak for or against this application, please step up to the podium. Share your name and address, please, and.
I just want to add something, um.
My name, I'm sorry, can you share your name and address?
Yeah, my name's Mark O'Hare. I live at one six one New Britton Avenue, right across.
Okay, thank you.
Rivercrest Condos, which were, um, which we, you guys were referencing to, because we're the, the area right across the street, directly across. And I can just tell you, we deal with a lot of traffic and noise coming from what's there right now.
Mm-hmm.
Um, with the landscaping area, and I'm guessing from being told, they're going to be sharing it with their. So this seems like it's just going to increase our our problems, um, with traffic coming in and out of that really kind of narrow driveway, which is right across from our entrance in in where we enter and exit from our our facility. And, um, uh, because we give a lot of the trucks coming in out there on a, on a daily basis, and now you know, we're talking about, um, a lot of noise, increase, this is going to be a lot of increased noise with the, especially with the large buses. Um, with the smaller ones, I don't think there's really much of an issue, but the larger buses, I I can see it. Um, because that, that's, that's a lot of buses coming out of there, in and out, early, later in the day, and then, no matter what they say, at night, there's going to be a lot of this at night as well, because, you know, there's a lot of student activities that goes on, because I I was an athlete. I remember we rode buses during the, at night during the uh, during the week and so forth, so, um, it's going to be a quality of life issue for us, I think. But one of the questions I had was, um, I guess I knew that M&amp;J was was not going to be the town's carrier anymore, correct? That yard that they have, um, you know, to me, that's really ideal to keep something like this. So what is, what is the, uh, what is going to be the future of that yard down there? Um, is M&amp;J still in existence down there, or is that going to be abandoned, or what? Do you know what the case is going to be?
No idea, right?
You have no idea?
Don't know.
It's owned, it's owned by M&amp;J Bus, so they can do whatever they choose. They could continue to service other school districts from there if they choose.
From from that facility. Okay, because, um, I don't know, that, because that, that really, because, I mean, it had already been referenced that there's been a lot of traffic, there's a lot of bus traffic traditionally on New Britton Avenue because of that site, but it's something that we kind of got used to, and and we just, it's certain times of the day we were dealing with a lot of bus traffic. But, um, again, that that seemed like an ideal place to keep buses, because it's a large area, not that close to residential. But I think, I think the residents, whether you live where we live, or or along that street, or along anywhere close to it, because it's pretty, everything's pretty tightly knit in there. I think they're going to have a, an issue with this, with the amount of traffic and noise that's going to be resulting, and that's just what I'd like to say, so.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Come on up.
How are we doing? Um, I'm also a resident at Rivercrest, I'm one sixty-nine, so I'm literally the doorway in front of that driveway, like twenty-five yards. And I'm just going to agree with everything.
Sorry, can we get your name as well?
Oh, Ryan Anderson, sorry.
Thank you.
Um, I'm just going to agree with everything he said, and if you, like, go back to the video of them taking the right turn, I mean, you can hear the screech of their brakes, too, so you're adding that noise along with lights, along with, I mean, just under eighty vehicles to what noise that we already have, like, thirty yards outside our door, starting at six AM. I mean, if you were to ask any resident in here if that was going to be a change added to their life, that's brutal. So that's pretty much all I got. Just wanted to.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Oops, excuse me. Anyone else in the room?
Okay.
Shannon?
If anyone has called in to offer comment on this specialty transportation, special permit application, please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom, and you'll be acknowledged to address the commission. And we do have a hand raised. And Fornier, if you could, your name and address, please?
Hi, can you all hear me?
Yes, we can.
Brilliant. Uh, my name is Nate Fornier, uh, one sixty-seven New Britton Avenue. Uh, so I also live in the condos, uh, similar to Mark and Ryan, and, uh, wanted to share my thoughts. Unfortunately, couldn't be there in person today. Um, sadly, and I'll try and keep this brief, I think you guys have done a great job asking all the questions, uh, that I would have asked as well. Um, I think sadly, this change is going to impact, you know, the value of the communities along this route in a meaningful way that's different than the prior occupant. Um, I think you're going to see, you know, seventy, eighty vehicles multiple times a day, in and out. Not only that, but also rearranging themselves within the facility. That kind of noise, I mean, on a daily basis, in and out, at, it sounds like not only school hours and around that, but beyond school hours and kind of into the night, depending on sports games, et cetera. That kind of thing around the place that you live can, you know, as Ryan mentioned, have a meaningful impact on someone's, like, life, mental health. I mean, if they work from home, I don't even know how you would do that. So I think there are a lot of considerations there. Um, on top of that, I think, uh, you know, forty vehicles, um, every morning. Uh, as a former occupant, occupant, I think there's a lot of struggle that folks are going to have there. And unfortunately, the property values, everything kind of around it is going to be negative for those folks. Um, and speaking from someone also who's like in that building, as one of you mentioned, and I appreciate you asking the question. The lights coming from those vehicles shining directly into the window is much different than the former occupant, who would have, you know, maybe three or four trucks coming in, not seventy vehicles twice a day. So I just want to, like, underscore the taking that this is going to have on the lives of those residents. Uh, two other points, and I'll keep it brief, because I'm sorry for taking up a bit of time here, but I want to make my points clear. Uh, the rail trail that's behind, uh, frequent user of that rail trail. I think the planting and kind of creating a barrier there is awesome and hopefully effective, but I will say, I mean, people use that to get out in nature, uh, in the community, and I do think having, again, seventy buses backing in and also rearranging on that rail trail is going to take away a lot from people's ability to enjoy that space, which I'm sure is what it was intended for, for the community. Um, and I, last point I'll make, uh, as someone who lives on that road, right, and has seen, uh, the traffic and kind of the, like, street manner that occurs as people drive down that street. Unfortunately, there is a lot of speeding that happens on that street. Uh, the speed limit may be thirty or forty miles an hour, but you'll see and hear people flying down the street. Uh, not only do I think that's a risk for the buses, but it's a risk for the folks that are parked around there. It's like not really a safe place to, you know, walk when folks are flying, never mind pull out, uh, you know, however many feet-long bus. Um, and the last point on those, I mean, on the video, you can kind of see, I think those buses probably are going, maybe not wheels over the line, but mirrors are poking out over the line. I think there's just a lot of potential harm that can be done, uh, with the traffic patterns around there. Um, so I I don't think it's ideal for seventy buses in and out every day. I think unfortunately, it's higher risk for some kind of accident or something like that. Um, and yeah, I'll. Um, and yeah, I'll close by saying, uh, I hope the town considers, uh, this is a taking of property of value, of quality of life for the surrounding residents. Uh, as well as those looking to use the nature space behind, um, this bus station. So that's all I wanted to say. I appreciate you guys listening.
Thank you very much.
Okay, if anyone else has called in to offer comment on the specialty transportation application at one fifty New Britain Avenue, please raise your hand. Using the feature in Zoom and you'll be acknowledged to address the commission. Miss, no, here we go. Divyes?
Yeah, uh, yeah, this is, uh, Divyes Rashkodiya from Five Kabul. Um, just a one quick question, uh, maybe I missed it earlier. Um, but, um, how much is the saving for the town by switching the contract over to the new company compared to M and J? Because now we are just adding on so many things rather than just continuing a contract with M and J.
That's not under consideration for the Town Plan and Zoning Commission. This is, we're solely looking at the use and the site plan that was. Uh, consideration that the Board of Ed would have taken under, uh, when they reviewed the proposal requests. At the time, at the, uh, end of last calendar year.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
If anyone else has called in to offer comment on one fifty New Britain Avenue, please raise your hand. Mr. Chair, there are no other hands raised.
Okay, thank you, Shannon. Any response, Mr. Hoab, to any of the comments or questions made?
Oh, just very briefly, so I believe completely that the neighbors' concerns are sincere. And so it would be absurd to try to assail what they're saying. They're neighbors and they have every right to say these things. But as to safety, our companies and the business of safety, they have an established track record. We're not going to be taking risks with the traffic and so we may not be able to solve every neighbor's concern. This is one of those cases where it's sort of a societal balancing. We think it complies with your regulations and it fits. And the buses need to be here in town, but as far as safety, I don't buy into that argument, but I do believe they're sincere and. And their concerns, change is always difficult, so I have nothing further. Uh, I don't know if the owners want to be heard any further. You're good. Good. I do, uh, give a lot of credit to the property owners, by the way. I didn't say this in the initial presentation. I was there several weeks ago and they have gone above and beyond in terms of cleaning, getting the property ready. It's not completely finished yet, but they've committed to cleaning up all the fencing, which had gotten overgrown on the. Town side as well and, and their side of the fence and then to put up the buffer. So I, I give them a tremendous amount of credit. Being good community members, so that's it. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any commissioners have additional questions that have come up? Dave?
A good one. When would we anticipate getting a lighting plant?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
When would we, when would we anticipate getting a lighting plan for the area?
When to put in the plants?
No, no, the lighting plan?
Oh, lighting plan, I'm sorry. That's what happens when you get old, uh, poor kids suffer all the time. I can't hear what they're saying, um. Well, I think the thing is to have a vote and. I, I think it would be subject to the manufacturer, but they, they need to have it in by the fall when this. You know, we have to have an approval, so if you back in, you're off for the summer. So the sun, the days get shorter, so we're sort of, if, if you render a decision quickly, I think they'll. Probably pick up in investigating it right away because we have to time it through your time off and then getting it up and running. You have more?
Yeah, I just want to add in on.
Sure.
So just to add in on the lighting plan, uh, we went through the same, uh, process with the town of Bayonne when we got the contract ten years ago. Um, we also, we had tow path, uh, apartments and condos on one side, and I forget the name of the other one up. Um, Security Drive, I forget the name of that, uh, condo complex up there. Um, and they were concerned about the lighting as well. Um, and what we, what we will plan to do with this property as, just like we. There is LED lighting, um, and the LED lighting, which surprisingly, if you haven't seen it, when you're standing outside of it. Um, there's a lot of, you know, I know Avon High School has it. I'm pretty sure Farmsen High School has it. Lights just the feet. And not outside, something like twenty feet. You don't see the lighting. Um, and that's what we would do. So I don't think that that would be a problem for any neighbors or even the, even the walking trail, which is right behind us. I don't think that that would be an issue for them when we have the LED lighting there.
Timing though, if you get an approval, you get on the lighting plan to submit to the town right away, I presume?
No, we would, yes, we would right away. We would just, as soon as we get approval, we have to figure out obviously where the lighting is going. Um, and then submit that proposal to you, but I wanted to let you know about the lighting where it's not shining into other properties.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Mr. Fornier has raised his hand to offer another comment.
Okay, sure.
And entertaining.
Yep, please.
If I may, thank you guys. Um, one last question on safety and appreciate you guys taking this all seriously, uh. I can tell, um, you guys care about the value of property owners and also care about the quality of the. Transportation for the students, so appreciate all of your help here. On the safety front, uh, one thing I've noticed, I've actually been up that road, uh, across the street on one fifty. And it is a like very steep and maybe you guys can speak to it because I'm sure you've looked into it, but a very steep decline down that hill. And I do worry in terms of safety as winter approaches, the ability to safely move, you know, seventy, like very heavy buses. Out of there, uh, pending, you know, cancellations, I think. Even a light snow not properly handled, you could have buses sliding out into the road. Um, can you guys address that concern more so from a safety perspective?
Yeah, we will be keeping, um, adequate snow equipment onsite during the winter season to make sure this doesn't happen and that will include. Some form of onsite, uh, snow belt solution as well. Um, in the past, this winter, as you know, we've had multiple, um, snow events, um, with trucks coming in and out. It, it has never been an issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, one more check. Mike?
Um, Shannon, was a traffic study conducted for this application?
Uh, there was not, given the nature of the use, um, given we know the quantity of vehicles and the timing. It's not like a retail development and we're having to, to run the numbers of. There's X number of square feet, so how many trips in the morning and evening peak hour? It's kind of. It's very perfunctory, given the nature of the use, so clearly there's. Um, and it's not necessarily even peak hour because the buses are already out on the road during our peak hour, so their. Employees are arriving typically prior, so your, your peak hour on New Britain Avenue is probably in the seven thirty to eight thirty range. Right? So the employees have already arrived at that point and the bussers are out on the road. Getting all the kids to school and then they're coming back to the bus yard after the peak hour. Somewhat similar in the evening, um, they may be arriving back in the peak hour. Close to the peak hour of New Britain Avenue because grade schools get out earlier than our evening peak hour. Um, again, that's probably anywhere between four thirty and six o'clock. We'd have to do an exact count to know the specific peak hour of New Britain Avenue. Um, so those buses, it sounds like based on the discussion this evening, those buses are arriving at the start. And most of the buses will be back in the yard by five o'clock. With some, there's the late bus for high school. I think IR has a late bus and any sporting buses would be arriving after that timeframe. So, no, a, a traffic study was not conducted because it's generally done to understand the actual demand on the road. The buses have already always been there. They've been on New Britain Avenue, so from a vehicle demand and impact demand. It doesn't really change.
Okay.
From that standpoint.
Thank you, Shannon.
The shift on New Britain Avenue obviously has a, a micro impact on that specific location.
Thanks.
I got an, I have another hand read.
Okay. Please.
Okay, Mr. Fornier, three times, that's it.
Excellent. I super appreciate you guys. I ask one last question here, um, obviously very concerned about. The quality of life on the property and speaking out for even those who aren't here. Uh, I ask, are there other locations in consideration for this contract? Uh, I understand the bus contract was changed from one company to another. I understand the school year will be approaching and I, I just want to make sure that a. Full and thorough search of all available properties that may fit better than this are completed because I do understand. You know, the town has to get kids to school, like that's priority number one. I just do not believe that this is the location to do it. And I want to make sure that it is not a, this is the only location that has been surveyed. This is the best, this kind of deal for the current busing company. And that this is almost compulsory because we have to get kids to school next year, right? And that would be, in my mind, a huge miss on the planning committee and on the town if they had not. Uh, reviewed all available options and, uh, almost accepted something out of compulsion. Thank you.
I'm not aware, uh, I, I'm sure my clients did due diligence. There are only so many locations available for something like this. Frankly, based on the distances from the neighbors. I would respectfully disagree. I think this is an ideal location and, uh, it's particularly because it's distance from. Residents is if you look at that terrible exhibit I hint, looking exhibit that I gave you, that, those are pretty big distances. There. Probably is no perfect location in town, but I know my clients worked very hard and I know the property owner has. Been killing it in terms of getting the property ready for this, so. I, that's all I can really add to the conversation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Should we do a town study or a sound study on the impact on the community then? I just want to make sure all the routes are covered, truly.
We, we appreciate your comments, Mr. Fornier. We understand.
Okay, will that be addressed?
Having a sound study? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, on impact to the community, the rail trail, et cetera.
It's not a standard practice.
No, it's not a standard practice. The, the commission will deliberate on all the concerns that we've heard and the information we've heard from the applicant at this point.
Okay, understood. I would just still consider it, uh, taking a value of quality of life, but thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. All right, are we ready to close the public hearing? Just to be clear, once we close a public hearing, that's no more questions, interaction with the applicant and it's left now just to the commission to deliberate. Okay, I hereby close the public hearing. Let's do kind of a mission or check in, I guess. I'm sure there, if we're thinking in favor, there's going to be some conditions as well, Matt.
Sure.
Where are you at?
Uh, so I recognize neighbors' concerns on traffic and noise. Additionally, the right turn is. I think there is a condition, uh, to be made for that specifically, um, how that's formatted, uh, you know, we can discuss. Um, but, you know, it's obvious, right? There are going to have lights coming in their windows. There is going to be more noise. Um, but that said, it still meets the standards.
Okay, Bob?
Yeah, I, I have to agree with Commissioner Bradel. I, I, I sympathize with him. Uh, my best friend growing up lived in the seven hundred block. Of New Britain Ave and, um. You know, his biggest complaint, which I witnessed firsthand, was the trash trucks. Four o'clock in the morning, they were taking off out of that parking lot and on that corner, it was quite a rumble. Um, so I can sympathize with them. Uh, that being said, I, I think they did a great job. With their presentation, um, we need the buses in town. I mean, they are our new contract. Um, and I think it fits the criteria perfectly, so. Uh, I'm, I'm game.
Uh, same. I, I agree with the previous commissioners. Um, I. Uh, appreciate everybody who called in and came to testify and I understand their concerns, but. It is an industrial zone and, uh. And, uh, yeah, the case, uh, meets all the requirements and so. It's, uh, something necessary for our town, the school buses, so I, uh, am in favor.
Uh, I will concur. It is a C one zone. It's, we could have, you know. Intensive or more intensive things going on there, so. Uh, I definitely appreciate it, um, your concerns. Uh, I myself, a few years back, got a stop sign put right in front of my driveway.
Sorry.
Yeah, so everyone who goes up mountain road stops in front of my house. With, you know, bearing, um, the tractor, the trailers, their, um, bad mufflers. Their brakes, so I appreciate it. It's not a lot of fun, but. It needed a stop sign, so sometimes we have to. It, it's not, it's not any fun and I completely understand your thoughts, but I do think this is, appears to meet all the requirements.
I don't have anything more to add. I do agree though.
Okay, yeah, I think I agree with a lot of what was said. I think New Britain Avenue in general is a tricky marriage of. Commercial and residential and in many different spots. Um, and we're sort of left holding the bag and trying to figure out how to make that work and. Uh, try to represent, um, both sides, but it does meet what we would ask of a C one zone in that particular spot. Um, I do think there's some conditions that we should consider around the, the widening, the entrance or clearing and widening the, the apron there. That's been talked about. Um, Shannon, on the lighting, is there a preference from the town on how that gets handled? Like. Are you, are you comfortable with it? Just, or you just want us to decide sort of whether we want them to come back or not?
Sure, you can make it a condition of approval that they have to submit a lighting plan and that I will share it at a minimum in their planner's report.
Okay.
Um, typically, I'd say ninety, ninety-five percent of the time, we can come to an agreement at the staff and applicant level. So that I can share a reasonable final product with the commission. Um, it shouldn't necessarily warrant, uh, uh, coming back as a site plan review, but just make it a condition of approval that it has to be.
Okay.
Submitted, um, which they'll do prior to installation and then I'll review it with you folks.
And can, thank you for clarifying that. Can we? More of a process thing, I guess. I'm still concerned about the light and such across the street and I know we can't, as Mr. Hub said, put something up in the middle of the street. Can we recommend engaging with the owner of the properties across the street to? To do something or is that really my sort of overreaching here? Oh, stump Shannon.
No, it just would have been an easier conversation if, when the hearing was open, so you could engage the applicant in that conversation. Um. You, you can't mandate it because it's not on their property.
Right.
Right, so there's nothing they can do on their property. Um, so you can request that they. Reach out to the, um, homeowners association because it is a condo, so there would be a homeowners association. To see if an, an amicable resolution with respect to the lighting. Um. But that's about as far as we can probably go.
That's what I thought, but I wanted to.
That's, yeah.
Okay.
So.
I appreciate that.
Because what one party is going to consider appropriate and another party.
Yep.
Is perhaps going to be quite different.
Yep.
So.
Okay.
And staff won't be able to mandate other than.
Sure.
You know, suggest the dialogue take place, but.
Okay.
We won't be able to force an agreement.
Okay, thanks, Shannon. Everybody comfortable with those conditions? I sort of mentioned from the, anything else that anybody would want included?
Just the, the refining or, or expanding, I should say, of the, the apron.
Yeah.
The turn area, maybe trimming back a little.
Yep.
Things visible.
Making the encouraging visibility. That's my big concern.
Good.
Yes.
Anybody want to take a shot at a motion on this one?
Sure.
I saw Matt taking notes, so he was ready.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the application. By Specialty Transportation Incorporated for special permit and site plan approval for school bus transportation facility. At one fifty New Britain Avenue, C one zone, with the condition, they submit a lighting plan. Uh, additional condition that we investigate widening the apron and improving the sightline. And additionally, request they work with the.
property owner adjacent uh, on solving the light issue?
Potential light issue.
Potential light issue?
Across the street.
Across the street?
Across the street with the bus lights. So it's a headlight issue. They're thinking of the dialogue.
Did he cover it in that, or do you need him to?
No, I'm good.
Okay.
Okay.
Oh, we have a second. All right, everybody clear with what we're voting on now? Comfortable with what we're voting on? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, second item, Farmington West Estates Limited Plan, um, application for ten lot subdivision of Governor's Pride. Well, can we take just a quick timeout?
Sure.
Bathroom break?
I, I think it's a great idea. I'll meet you there.
Yeah.
Maybe more than once. Put it out the whole room, Shannon, with a bathroom break. I think I heard a bathroom break.
I think we had, must have had a bunch of government and law students getting in there. Oh my God, that's hysterical. They literally waited for some hands.
Oh, really? From where?
Yeah.
That's okay.
Are you?
Right. I understood. Yeah, wow, we cleaned the roof. Cleaned the roof.
Civics, they're taking, it's the government law class, one of the requirements.
It's um, for second graders.
That's all.
Colonnator curriculum.
A meeting.
So it'll be like.
Oh, they can do anything. Both my kids at this point. Well, I don't know, I don't think my youngest is taking government law.
Very.
I kinda like it. Two, uh, two to three groups really enjoy it.
What school did they go to?
Honestly, they probably looked at you.
Union.
It's good this one.
Yeah.
When, since it's only three hours, doesn't mean it's going to be a twenty minute meeting.
It was our only combined day.
That's right.
And. Percentage of public schools that they probably have experience following coming.
We're ending all the second graders this week.
Wow, I have to find out when your law system.
Yeah, you should know.
I always like to go to places.
I got.
Very rarely.
Do I get to go?
Under, sorry.
Can we, can we call this meeting back to order, please? Mr. Wankowski, can we call the meeting back to order?
Yes.
Oh yeah, definitely.
I'm sure.
Definitely.
Yeah, but like.
Okay, don't start drinking again.
Helped. Thanks.
All right. All set?
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners James Iogus, one oh four Bellevue Avenue, Bristol for the applicant. Farmington West, uh, Limited Partnership. Stephen Barberino is the uh, manager of that company. Uh, this is the property that's located on one seventy-seven uh, and Snowberry Lane. I'm sure you're familiar with it. Uh, it's been in the development phases since about nineteen ninety-four and we're still adding phases as we go along. The uh, the property is zoned um, AH and that zoning took place by virtue of a judicial decree that occurred in September of nineteen ninety-four. Uh, basically at that time, affordable housing application was made by Mr. Barberino. And the zoning commission had denied it. Uh, at their hearing, an appeal was taken. And the appeal was heard by the uh, Superior Court. And the appeal was based upon a, a couple of different issues. Basically, one of the uh, contentions was that the road network was insufficient to handle the amount of traffic. The road network being a rare road, uh, one seventy-seven. Uh, the court reviewed the record, uh, found in favor of um, Mr. Barberino's group and that part of the appeal was dismissed. The second part of it was the number of cart paths or small roads that are within the development um, were insufficient to handle traffic and were unsafe. Again, based upon the traffic study that was produced at the time of that hearing, uh, the Superior Court agreed Mr. Barberino. Uh, and that part of the appeal was overturned. And then the third issue basically revolved around schools and whether or not this development was going to create an overload on the school system. Uh, and again, the court found that there was no evidence of that. And the uh, affordable housing designation was allowed to exist. So that's how that all took place. And again, that was in nineteen ninety-four. The regulations that were in effect at that time were the nineteen ninety-one zoning regulations. I believe they were revised in nineteen ninety-one. And those are the regulations that are applicable to this application and all of their applications concerning this particular site. I think that Shannon addresses that in her comments. Uh, and uh, I just wanted to make sure that it was part of the record. What, what I wanted to do and, and again, we're going to do this in three small parts, but I wanted to submit a memorandum of that decision to the, to the commission, just so it's part of your record uh, in the event that we needed in any future time. And along with it are the maps that were used back in nineteen ninety-four in order to apply for uh, the approvals. So I'm going to give that to Shannon, make it part of the record. Incidental to that approval, uh, subsequent phases were approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission over a period of time. Uh, drainage studies were compiled in, in April nineteen ninety-three, uh, June of two thousand and five, March of two thousand and seven, April of two thousand of seven, March of twenty twenty-one. And then finally, as part of a maintenance program for the existing water quality basin, a summary was done by David Whitney, uh, dated January sixth, twenty twenty-one. I have copies of all of those. And I will submit those uh, after our, our presentation is completed. The applicant received, applied for and received a wetlands approval for this site in December of twenty twenty-three. At the time that we applied for the wetlands approval, it was for the entire site. This application in front of you tonight is limited to ten lots, which is a phase of the uh, total site. And it's a portion of property that was approved by wetlands. It's called Phase Six A and it consists of ten lots located on the proposed road, Governor's Pride. And it's shown on the map in front of you that's on the board. The property is serviced by City Sewer and by Connecticut Water. Uh, each lot will contain a single family home. And as I indicated, the zoning regulations that were in effect back in nineteen ninety-four are the ones that are applicable in this particular case. I think Shannon in her comments on her review that was submitted with the notices indicated uh, that it does meet the zoning requirements in terms of area setbacks, side yards, front yard, rear yard. Uh, so it is compliant with your regulations and it meets the subdivision uh, standards that this uh, town uh, had adopted back in nineteen ninety-four. Uh, open space had been proposed as part of this uh, entire plan, the overall plan for this subdivision. And originally, it was set at about a hundred and fifty-three thousand, six hundred and seventy, seven hundred and sixty square feet. When we went to the zoning commission, uh, the wetlands commission, excuse me, uh, there were some adjustments made to the open space. We had to move a couple of lots a little further away from the wetlands uh, so that we did not impact them. Uh, and we had to create approximately another three thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven square feet of open space. Added to what we already proposed, the total open space for this site is one hundred and fifty-seven thousand, one hundred and forty-seven square feet. The open space will be deeded to the homeowners association as we've done with uh, previous phases. Uh, in addition to that, there will be an overlaying conservation easement to the town of Farmington so that they can monitor that the uh, the property is properly taken care of. Um, we have sent notices uh, to all the abody property owners. I believe uh, Mr. Barberino's office is, is uh, complied with that request and submitted those to the uh, planner for their review, so I think they are in order. In addition to that, we've requested uh, a waiver from the subdivision regulations relating, relating to the grade uh, of the road within fifteen feet of the intersection of Governor's Pride and Snowberry. Uh, it's ordinarily two percent. We're requesting a waiver to three percent within fifty feet of that intersection. The reason for the request is that the wetlands commission requested that we move the buildings a little further away so that we can adjust the slope uh, in the wetlands area. And they wanted to make sure that our um, footing drains were able to connect to the storm drainage system to uh, prevent water from entering the basements. We did that in uh, in compliance with their request. And consequently, we're here asking for a small waiver of one percent on the grade within fifteen feet of uh, Snowberry and Governor's Pride. The overall site plan and layout of the phase that we're talking about, the ten lots and the uh, detention systems and drainage were developed by Kratzer and Jones. Seb Bavino is our land planner. He's here tonight. And Andrew Quirk is here and he's our civil engineer and he's also here. They're both going to make presentations, then we can open it up for questions. Seb?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commission Members. My name is Seb Bavino, Planner of Kratzer Jones and Associates, representing the applicant. The name of the subdivision is uh, Farmington West Estates, uh, Phase Six A. The property is twelve point eight eight acres, uh, plus or minus acres. The total property that's shown, not that face, but the overall uh, part of this less section of uh, property that Mr. Barberino owns. Um, it's bounded by the north and south by Snowberry Lane and the neighbors there bought Snowberry Lane on the south side. Shannon, if you could bring that up, yeah, that's better. East by uh, Route one seventy, seventy-seven and west by conservation easement area next to Secretariat Court. On the west side, which is the left side of the sheet, there's Secretariat Court and then there's neighbors on the other side of that. Um, this property, as the attorney indicated, is zoned AH, is served by public water and sewer. The smallest allowed allotted area in this subdivision is five thousand square feet with fifty feet of frontage as a minimum. Uh, most lots are larger than that. A few are as, as large as seven thousand square feet. Uh, the property slopes from the northeast to the southwest. The northeast is the upper right side of the sheet uh, near uh, Route one seventy-seven. Southwest is to my left on the lower end, uh, the property slopes in that direction. It's a gradual slope. The proposed drainage is designed to maintain this pattern of drainage. My associate, uh, partner will go over the drainage in detail when he comes up. This property is designed to have six phases. Phase Six A is the current one and uh, is the one that is proposed in front of you, has ten lots. Um, this section of the proposed road, Governor Pride, is five hundred feet in length, plus or minus. And you can see that on the east side of this property, it's shaded in green. That's about five hundred feet north-south direction. Uh, starts at the intersection with Snowberry Lane and goes north. Uh, that terminus there, that's the high point of the property. That is why the uh, the face ends there, so the drainage will be able to be directed south-southwest. Uh, we propose two detention areas to achieve zero increase in runoff and the water quality for this project. It's on site. Uh, one is in the northeast corner by Route one seventy-seven, the light blue, that's a, a detention area. Right now, there's water that discharges there from Route one seventy-seven by the state of Connecticut and basically spreads out over the property uncontrolled. We're going to be able to uh, intercept that and properly uh, take care of it and then discharge it back into the wetlands to the south, uh, south side of that. Uh, the other detention area uh, is in the center of the property to the west. Um, which is not part of the, the, you know, the ten lot subdivision, but will be constructed as part of this phase. Andrew Quirk, uh, my partner will go over this detail as I indicated. Uh, the appropriate easements for drainage pipes uh, through all these lots uh, are shown on the map. There's a proposed access easement to the northeast, which is the detention area to the northeast. We, we have an easement there for maintenance. And also there's an access for the uh, center uh, detention area coming from the west, uh, east and then entering the pond on the southeast corner. Street trees are proposed as a regulation calls for. Uh, these trees will be a mix of white, um, will be uh, flowering trees because we don't want to plant large trees like maple, sugar maples, uh, because the lots are small, there's a lot of utilities. And we don't want to have a problem twenty years from now, so we're going to propose dark woods, crab apples and the similar, uh, similar type of trees. Uh, the trees will be a fifty-foot interval. It will be located in such a way to avoid uh, utilities. The center detention area will be um, landscaped with uh, maple trees and um, small flowering shrubs to uh, enhance their area for the neighbors. They're going to live around that detention area. Um, it would be uh, on the south side, along the neighbors to the south, the, the homes they are on Snowberry Lane. Uh, we propose a buffer to add to the buffer. There's an existing buffer there. We propose to add to the buffer a row of uh, white and brush spruces. Uh, and um, we estimate about forty-three uh, white and brush spruce be planted there uh, where the gaps exist or will exist because of the construction that will take place. These lots, uh, are lots one oh seven through one twelve on, on your subdivision map that you have in front of you. The planting details and the notes, the appropriate notes, how to plant the trees, what kind of trees and so forth, are under submitted plans. Uh, we propose street lights, uh, typical street lights will be provided. Landscaping in the rear of lot ninety-four to one oh one for this, uh, for this phase six A, which is on the lots to the right. Uh, ninety-four is the first lot on the south side right there. One oh one is the first uh, north. And lots one oh two, one oh three and eighty and eighty-four, which are in the future phases to the west. Um, we propose to uh, build a field stone wall. We have a lot of uh, stones on this property and we intend to use those. Uh, portion of those, um, We have a lot of stones on this property and we intend to use those, portion of those, to build decorative stone walls, which will function as a decoration in the backyard and will define the space that will be utilized by the homeowner. And it will protect the wetlands because there will be a solid barrier between the property that will be used and the property that we want to maintain as an open space and conservation easement. In the rear of this proposed wall, there'll be wetlands type of plantings. There's a typical section showed on the plan, on the left and on the right, where it shows the typical home with the retaining wall and the plantings on a landscaping plan. And those plantings will be supervised by soil scientist George Logan. He was instrumental of flagging these wetlands and going through the application process with the wetlands commission. We will install plaques at 40-foot interval throughout the edge of the wetland area and the conservation easement area. And these plaques will be there to alert the homeowner and people that service the property that there's a conservation easement there and wetlands and they should not be encroached upon. All the homes proposed on this project have footing drains. They are gravity footing drains. All the footing drains are above the water table. One home on this project, 6A, Lot 94, will be on a slab. And then there's one more lining up, number 100, for the future phase 6F, which is to the north-northeast. The home styles that we proposed and they were submitted by the architect to staff. There's multiple home styles based on lot sizes. There's nine in total, nine home styles. They all be two stories high colonial design with two-car garage and pitch roofs. Plans were provided as I indicated. They're custom homes, basically. All the driveways will have a maximum grade of 8% as required. All roads are private roads. The main road is a 22-foot wide paved area. All utilities are underground. There's no above-ground utilities. All roof leaders are tied to underground storage unit to provide groundwater recharge. Each home, the roof area is tied via roof leaders to dry wells on the property. Each property will have two dry wells. And the intention is to infiltrate the water, which is considered reasonably clean water from the roof area into the ground. We propose multiple storm scepters in the drainage system for water quality on this The subdivision is designed with a main loop road, as you can see, has a loop road and it has some connectors, two connectors, and then you have some side carpet, as the attorney called them, a very short distance and they're narrow. They're about 18-foot paved areas. Paved road, 18-foot wide and serves one of the phases to the east. There's three lots there. The submitted set of plans has multiple detail sheets. One is the conservation easement, shows the conservation easement I provided to Shannon tonight. And it shows the distance from the conservation easement to those walls, to the back of the homes, indicating the usable areas of each home. The overall landscaping plan is also provided with details and notes, the grading and erosion control plans and details, the stormwater basin details, there's two of them. Sheet DR1 shows the drainage system from the northeast detention area to the, through the property, to the center detention area and back to Snowberry Lane. So one of the sheets is called DR1. It shows the drainage, how it's going to flow through the property from the northeast all the way down to the southwest corner with the arrows, the flow arrows, where the pipes are going to be and where the catch basin is going to be. We have performed test pits in this property over the last few months to find out where the groundwater is. And Sheet G1, the overall grading plan, in addition to other grading, shows the test pit data for the appropriate areas, the Phase 6A. And the additional phases like Sheet G2 shows the pit data also to the left of the sheet, on the upper left side of the sheet. We have erosion control notes. On the erosion control notes indicate who's responsible to maintain the erosion controls through the project. And notes are there indicating that the erosion controls need to be in place and in good condition at all times. And if there's damage to them, they have to be repaired in reasonable time. And the construction sequence is also shown on that plan. And that there's notes there that prior to any activity, the town staff shall be notified and meeting will be arranged to go over the details of this construction, phase by phase. And so everybody will be on the same page in terms of the erosion controls. Where should they be installed? The plan indicates that we will stake the erosion controls. They will be installed, they'll be inspected by town staff and then the construction can begin. Since receiving comments, we have made a good effort to respond to all the comments and we revised the maps to address staff concerns. We have few items left to be addressed. My partner will go over the drainage details unless you have any questions for me at this time. And I do have a response sheets that there indicate what we have done to address those comments and I will submit it to Shannon for the record. So that you know what we have done revising the maps to this stage. And there will be a few more items to be addressed, but nothing major.
Thank you, Seb. Just so the commission is aware, I think Shannon and Bruce gave us comments last week, Tuesday. And between Tuesday and today, we were able to address most of those comments, revise the plans and submit those. I'm sure Shannon and Bruce have not had a chance to review our comments yet, but we did, we did go after it pretty quick and pretty hard and try to resolve any outstanding issues. I just wanted to kind of reiterate something I said earlier is that, again, this is, this is Phase 6 of this project. So as you're going through the development, a lot of the house styles are, it's consistent with what's already there, things that we've already developed. The cart paths are pretty similar to what we've already developed in those sites. So this is just another phase of what we've been doing right along. This phase, although, added a couple of detention basins. And Andrew Quirk is here to talk about that, to show how we've handled the detention and the stormwater to ensure that there's a zero increase in runoff from this site, pre-development, post-development. So Andrew will address those for you.
Good evening, Chair, Commission members. My name is Andrew Quirk, professional engineer in principle with Kratzer Jones and Associates. And as was stated, I'm going to focus almost exclusively on the stormwater management component of this project. And what I'll be describing is what was reviewed and approved by the wetland commission. There were a number of changes that took place during that process and the plans that were submitted in front of you are what was the final outcome of that process. And that process led us to current standards of addressing stormwater management that's different than the 1994 plan. So that although zoning, it was determined by the courts that the zoning requirements dealt with applying those from that time period to today in terms of the zoning standards and working closely with town staff, and I believe it was a town council or the, there was a memorandum as part of the file at the time with wetlands that the current stormwater management standards needed to apply. So that's what has been done up to today's current standards and addressing all the stormwater management issues within the confines of this section of Phase 6. I'll talk about stormwater management in terms of all of Phase 6, but in front of you today is the application for the 10 lot subdivision 6A. But the two are so intertwined in terms of how that takes place. And nearly all of the stormwater management is addressed within 6A in terms of all the detention basins, stormwater quality and quantity treatments within 6A. So with that, I'm sure you're all very familiar from other applications with stormwater management, but I wanted to take a little bit of time just to go through what stormwater management is, just for everyone's benefit and maybe address some of the questions that might come up and the things that we looked at in terms of addressing stormwater management for this particular project. Primarily, we look at two main areas, stormwater quantity and stormwater quality. Beginning with stormwater quantity, we look at the pre-development phase and the post-development phase. This is then sometimes termed as ZRO, where you have zero increase in runoff of the peak discharge rates for development, thus taking the post-development and having it match or reduce the pre-development rates. We did that with a sophisticated model that's been used for a long time, SCSTR 55, the Soil Conservation Service Technical Record 55. That is a model that is best suited for this type of development because it takes into account many factors. Within the report, there is a table, I didn't include in the presentation, but we always have it, that looks at what are those factors of the pre-development and the post-development. So with the TR55 model, that is more in-depth than some of the other models, that it looks at the particular soil type. They're rated from A to D. On this particular site, we have soils that range from B, C, and D. D soil would not, would have high rates of runoff. Wetlands would be a situation of a type D soil because they're already saturated, so runoff is going to occur more frequently. Type A soils would be soils that have a lot of capacity to retain water before there is runoff. So all this is related to runoff. On this particular site, we have a range of B, C, and D, D being in the wetland areas, the development in the B and the C areas. The model also looks at cover type. So in particular, as you can see on the screen before you, there's various cover types. There's wooded areas where you would have the interception of leaves, vegetation that all intercepts runoff and slows down that path from the rain falling from the sky leading to the runoff pattern. Lawn areas and then impervious areas, again, on the other end of the spectrum where you'd have the fastest rates of runoff. Those all relate to CN factors, which we have in both the pre and the post-development situations. So we would look at all those changes in terms of, well, the soil type doesn't change, although with impervious, that becomes negated by the cover of the surface. But the coverage type and all those have the various factors for the CNs in the pre-development and the post-development. Then with the model, the other thing that's taken into account is the concept of a time of concentration. That's the time for all that contributing watershed area to have runoff that's leading to the point of analysis, the point that we're studying the runoff. If you have in a pre-development stage like this, it's going to take longer for the water to travel from the farthest reaches of the watershed to the point of analysis. As you pave and introduce impervious areas, that's going to be shortened. So you have the change in soil types, the change in cover and the change in time to get there. So the model takes into account all of that. And then most recently, this model has changed a little bit, the input factors. You may have heard that NOAA with some of the recent applications has something that's now specific to area, not just a town, but areas within a town, that it looks at the weather stations and areas and actually, you know, comes up with rates for that particular area of the town. And those can also then automatically be updated, just the way the weather averages are updated. It does the same with that on a 30-year average, so it's constantly being updated. Previously, there were DOT reported numbers that were used for 20 or 30 years and never changed. So that's the background on the model that we used and, you know, this has been in close conjunction with the town in addressing the stormwater issues. So with that particular to our project, the model that we use for the pre-development is described by, oop, the red won't show up on the screen. But if you can see in the bottom right is EX1. So I always name the pre-development existing, they're EX. So EX1 is the area that begins above Route 177, Plainville Avenue, follows through the wetland areas southerly to Snowberry Lane. There's an inlet in Snowberry Lane. So that would be the contributing area to that analysis point on Snowberry Lane. EX2 is very small, it's pretty hard to see there, but it's a small additional contributing area that comes down today through the stub, the easterly stub of Governor's Pride. EX3 is this, more or less the development area. It's the central portion of the development area. And that is the area that comes to the westerly segment of Governor's Pride. We talked about that loop road system. There's inlets there at the westerly portion. And then the very large watershed is EX4. That's the whole contributing area to a channel that runs just to the east of Secretariat Court. And that channel is separate from the drainage system that runs on Snowberry Lane. When this whole project was envisioned, they kept the natural waterways separate from the developed areas that would be piped and directed towards a basin that's further down Snowberry Lane. So we analyzed each of those four areas in the pre and the post-development stage. And for each of those, there is zero increase in runoff and for the water, water quantity numbers are addressed to either be maintained or reduced. And then on the next sheet shows the same condition in the post-development phase. So there's always some slight changes in terms of the watershed areas. It could be because of pipe networks or also in this case because of the detention basins that we have. So proposed area one is split into PR1A. That's the area that contributes to the first stormwater basin that I'll get into more detail later. Then the outfall from that is collected and brought in conjunction with PR1B. So then those two are added together so that we compare the pre and the post for that segment. PR2 remains a small area just along Governor's Pride. PR3 is split as well between 3A, being the area that is contributing to the stormwater basin in the center of the project. 3B is the remaining area downstream from that that is combined together for analysis. And then PR4 is essentially the same, the area is slightly reduced by the development, but essentially the same area to Secretariat. On the next sheet shows the proposal for what portion of that stormwater and drainage routes will be developed as part of 6A. It's a little hard to see with the green, but I'll see if maybe the red shows up now. But in green in the top right, thank you Shannon, is that first stormwater basin that's in that area. I'll get into more details there. The drainage culvert under Derby's Run would be constructed. And then highlighted in green, I tried to show the segments of pipes that'll be built as part of 6A, all the way over towards the detention basin in the center of the project. And then the stormwater basin would be constructed and then the pipes for the outfall from that back to Snowberry Lane. So near, but the majority of the storm drainage system is constructed as part of 6A. Also highlighted on the sheet is, we'll get into stormwater quality later, but the location of the storm scepters. Storm scepters are a proprietary hydrodynamic separator that would separate out the total suspended solids and the floatables through the swirling motion that separates those in a structure that can then be maintained and those pollutants can be removed. Prior to any collection, either to a stormwater basin or to the Snowberry Lane system, it passes through that treatment. And there's a full treatment train, but this does show the location of the four of those as well. So that leads us to the next slide, which shows the results of that stormwater management in terms of the quantities. So you have the four watershed areas and in each case, there is a reduction in the peak rate of discharge for each of the four watersheds and for all the storm events that were analyzed. So we analyze from the two-year event through the 100-year storm event and we have a reduction in all cases. I did include in red the numbers that, again, were just submitted recently. Staff hasn't had a chance to review those, but we've been working very close with town staff. And to address their comments, I just wanted to show that the changes that were requested in terms of the impact to the numbers, there still is a reduction in peak discharge rate. So the concept of what we're trying to achieve remains the same. So the concept of what we're trying to achieve remains the same. So for watershed one, which is that area that goes to, uh, Snowberry Lane. We have reductions from four to fifteen percent for the various storms. For watershed two, which is the area to the easterly edge of Governor's Pride. A reduction of seven to seventeen percent, um, where that connects into that portion of the storm drainage system. Watershed three, which is the majority of the project that passes through. The central stormwater basin before going out through the westerly end of Governor's Pride. Has reductions from three to eleven percent. And then the existing channel behind Secretariat. By means of taking some of that watershed and managing it through, uh, watershed three. There's a reduction of around around three percent for all storms. So in all cases, there is no increase, uh, in the post-development compared to the pre-development for this project. On the next slide, what I included is, um, samples from. The very new twenty twenty-four stormwater quality manual that just came out from D E P. And they do a very good job of describing each of the elements in terms of water. Quality, which is the second part of stormwater management. So not only do we address the quantity and the rates, but the quality of the discharge. Um, so stormwater quality is addressed best through a treatment train of best management practices. So it's not relying on one particular device, but a train of them, each of them having incremental steps to improve the water quality. Um, so we have all of these features incorporated in our plan. Uh, we did focus quite a bit on the the structures, but. The, there's a treatment trained through each of those. So in the center section, a little hard to see, is that the town is requiring, we have deep sumps on all the catch basins. That provides an additional reservoir for collecting, uh, uh, the total suspended solids, the sediments from the site. Um, that would be one of the, that would be the first step in the treatment train. The other is the isolation of the roof water runoff. As my partner Sev mentioned, that's generally clean water that's coming directly from the sky through the roof. We did a lot of soil testing on the site. And it's best to try to replicate the existing system where that water would have been absorbed by the soil. So that's exactly what we do. This outlines, excuse me, in the top right. How from the roof leader, it's directed to a dry well. There is an overflow in the event of a large storm event where it would overflow onto a splash pad as it typically would do. Um, the dry wells allow for that runoff from the roof to be absorbed in the in the soils, the way they would naturally. And they do presently, uh, to take place. Uh, the other items deal more with the stormwater basin prior at the entrance to each stormwater basin. We have a sediment for bay. This is an area that would collect all the sediment in a location that can be maintained. And have the sediment removed. That's outlined in the management plan on each of the stormwater basin sheets. And again, all the maintenance for these basins are done by the homeowners association, not by the town. Prior to the collection, uh, to the Snowberry loan, Snowberry Lane drainage system, there would be the. Hydrodynamic separators, those do the same thing, but in addition, those collect the floatables. So the oils and things of that nature are separated as well as the sediment. And then I also included in the bottom right, the outline of the stormwater basins where you have this treatment train. In particular, for our project, um, uh, sheet D five that you have in your package is, um. What came out of the review and approval from inland wetlands, which is an extensive stormwater basin. That is designed to replicate and function as wetlands adjacent to the wetland area. So it's, it serves for stormwater, uh, management as well as, um, through the vegetation that's proposed in the seedings that are here. And in conjunction with the soil scientist George Logan, creating an environment that's going to have biological uptake. Of pollutants and function as a a wetland area adjacent to the wetland system that's there. Presently, the water comes in in the top right portion of the sheet. From, uh, the state, uh, state highway Route one seventy seven. And there's no, um, address for stormwater quantity or quality, and this would do that. Uh, there's, um, upon first coming in, there's a micro pool which functions for that first opportunity for trapping sediment. There's a long flat basin and additional micro pools for two locations that water, uh, will be treated through this basin. Before the collection and, um, discharge back to Derby Run. And this will, um, again, achieve those numbers for the reduction in peak discharge rates. On the next sheet is the central stormwater basin area. Um, this function similarly where you have an inlet from the, uh, top left. And the bottom right from the development. And those are brought in to an area, uh, for treatment that's separated from the outlet with a riprap filter berm to create that sediment, um, trap areas. Uh, then, uh, as this store is sort of like a bathtub and. Uh, addresses the peak discharge rates and really slowly through the outlet control structure and back through the remaining development. Um, the area again would be fenced, vegetated and screened and maintained by the homeowners association. The last item I wanted to talk about, which is separate from stormwater, is the issue of the waiver and the road grades. Um, in particular. In the comment review list that you have, comment number fifty eight. The staff addresses both the issue of the waiver and the, um, vertical curve. On Governor's Pride and maybe what I'll do is just read the comment, um, to start the discussion. It says, "The roadway has been raised from the earlier inland wetland commission reviewed and approved plans. The raising of the roadway has increased the centerline grade from six to eight percent. Without adequate increases to the length of vertical curve." It goes on to details there. Um, and also that the approach grade is three percent, which is relevant to the waiver that we are seeking. Section four point eight three of the regulations for the subdivision states, "The centerline grade. Of the secondary street shall begin at the curb line of the main street. And have a maximum grade of two percent for at least fifty feet from said curb line." And this is where the commission's role comes into play. The maximum may be increased to four percent at the discretion of the commission. When the proposed street is permanent cul-de-sacs less than four hundred feet in length. We've submitted a waiver for that increase from two to three percent. Recognizing that this particular street is not a, is not a permanent cul-de-sac, but a private residential street. And we seek that the commission grant that waiver. So that the grades can work better in terms of the requirements that came out of inland wetlands. Which brings us to the slide that we have here. So at the bottom left is the first grade there from the intersection of Snowberry Lane. Where we come at three percent for fifty feet. That additional one percent helps us keep the grades up as we climb and go and enter the subdivision. In red is what we are currently proposing on the plans that you have, which then goes from three percent to eight percent. And then flattens out at the site. That grade being up higher keeps the driveways up higher, keeps the houses up higher, keeps everything above groundwater and and the wetlands. Um, the orange would comply with staff's comments that are here. But that would lower the road between a foot to a foot and a half. And would impact the driveway grades and the ability to have the houses, uh, above. Groundwater and meeting the inland wetland, uh, comments that we received. So those are the reasons why we're seeking the waiver. Um, of the intersection grade and then the comment about the vertical curve is that transition that's there is a fifty-foot transition. Um, it's approaching a stop sign, so having a shorter transition from an engineering standpoint, my professional opinion is still safe. Cause you're not at the regular roadway traveling speeds. You're within fifty feet of a stop sign. So you, you would be seeing the stop sign at that point, your travel speed would would be less. Having the shorter curve doesn't pose a safety issue. But staff has commented that to meet the travel speed throughout the road. We would have to be on the orange line. So there's, there's the two items there that we're, we're, um, seeking relief on. That concludes my presentation. I'll turn it back and then we can address questions.
Yeah, thank you, Andrew. And and again, I know it was a little more in-depth than than maybe possibly you you hear during your other applications, but. Uh, in this particular subdivision, we think it's important because of the addition of the detention basins. Uh, to achieve zero increase in runoff. So that's the extent of our, our presentation and we'd like to open it up to the commission for questions and then we can. When the, you get to speak if you'd like, yes.
Not going to keep you very long. My name is Stephen John Barberino Junior and, uh. As I'm listening to the dates and I heard the date nineteen ninety-one. That was Scott Donald, who was a former planner for Farmington that proposed diszoning for affordable housing. Nineteen ninety-three is when we went in for the wetlands on this. And you may or may not realize it, but at that time. This board, your predecessor board, was also the inland wetlands board. It was no conservation commission per se. There may have been, but I'm telling you how the board worked back then. And they granted at that time. That we could have the two crossings that we were going to need, plus the rest of the wetlands that it was mapped out at that time. I want you to know that. And then nineteen ninety-four, we filed and we went forward with the development. The reason I'm up here tonight, as I'm going with these dates and the fact that I started building with my friend Robert Masrel in nineteen seventy-four. Uh, time's going on. And what's not being said by our engineers, but they can say, because it's, I don't, I never speak a lie. I might be in the car business, but I honestly do not get into lies. Believe me, uh, the point is, I said, Seve, Severino. I said, "I want all the engineering for this whole lots, even though we're only here for so many tonight." I said, "I want the whole thing done, complete it, because I don't know how much the road in front of me is going to be. And I want to make sure everything's done so the board can feel confident. That everything was taken in consideration for all of the lots," you know, which I think was about fifty-nine. Fifty-seven, whatever it is, we lost a couple lots to make sure we had the zero runoff and so forth that they've talked about. But I just want to make you aware of that. I've been concerned to make sure it's right. I know why the town, uh, even though it wasn't really approved, it was. Why I, this development existed back then and it's here and it's with a lot of pride. That we've built all these houses and we will continue, but I want the board to know. I want it the whole thing, even though you're only seeing here, whether you're talking, whatever sections are coming up. They've all been integrated already to take care of everything and keep that zero runoff is what we're going to have, but what we've done. I just want you to know that. Thank you very, very much.
And and again, what what Stephen's talking about is is really something that Shannon and Bruce had, uh, talked to us about when we started the wetlands application. Was to try to get the wetlands permit for the entire site so that the commission could look at it. Uh, see what the entire plan was so that we could develop this in phases without having to go back to wetlands every time. And and it was a good idea. And in the final analysis, even though it took us. A couple of months to get through wetlands and we lost a couple of lots. Uh, we did make significant improvements in terms of, uh, uh, the open space and the drainage. Uh, that the commission was very well satisfied with, uh, with what we did. And here we are with this phase and after, if if time goes on and the road behind us isn't too short, we will come back with another phase.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate the presentation. We'll turn it over to the commissioners for questions at this point. Matt?
Sure. So thank you for the presentation. That was something I highlighted here. Thirty-plus years. It's a long road. Um, but, uh, Mr. Barberino did kind of, uh, jump in front of my main question, which was about the detention basins. And the design in, including, you know, phase A through F. So it seems like that is, that is established. Do we have any idea? I know, you know, maybe asking you to be a psychic here, but any idea when B, C. All the way through F, what, when that's possibly coming?
The remainder of the phases?
Yeah.
You know, it's market driven. Uh, two years ago, when the rates were three percent, uh, things were going pretty, pretty good. Uh, I I closed the loan today. It was seven percent. And you know, what it does is it it marginalizes the the number of people who can qualify for a mortgage. For for houses of this value. So i- it's really a hard question to answer. And, uh, we, we hope the rates come down and it'll give us a little boost.
Sure. So with that said, I I appreciate you, you know, designing it for the future, even though it's an uncertain future.
Yeah.
But, uh, that's, that's all the questions I have.
Okay, Bob?
Excellent presentation, by the way. I guess there's, there's a lot that that is a very unique little neighborhood. Do we know the average size of the house that's going to be built?
All right, uh, Mr. Barberino indicates twenty-three hundred to twenty-five hundred square feet.
Okay, and the starting price on those or the average price is going to be? Do we have any idea roughly? The reason I bring that up, because it's two-story colonials, two-car garage, all that stuff. Shannon, how does that put us into with the eighty thirty G development and they can't be different and all that good stuff?
These are all market rate.
Right.
So that, and they were part of the, so all the affordable housing had already been built as part of this development. So it, it doesn't have any bearing.
Point. Yep.
Correct.
Perfect. That's correct.
That's what I wanted to make sure. Okay.
Correct.
All right, good, I'm good.
Okay.
Thank you. No, no questions. Thanks for the presentation.
Liz?
Um, one question, um, the, uh, the grade on some of these roads. How does it compare throughout the other air parts of the develop? I mean, eight percent seems pretty steep.
I I think Sev is probably best qualified to answer that question, Sev. Do you know what the grade, the grades on Snowberry on the left, on the west side of the property coming up?
Seb Bobino, um, the grade for the loop road that comes around, uh, that heads, uh, north, northeast. Uh, it's probably, um, around the six percent range, I would say, six percent. In our case, we have there, um, the proposed grade is eight, Andrew, for a stretch. But eight is not an unusual grade in public roadways and these are private.
Okay, that was why my next question was going to be a comparison. I guess we talk, you know, I mean, I'm a visual person. I'm sorry, I I I get the grade, but. Are we driving like this?
No.
So to give a comparison, the road that we come in to come to Town Hall is much steeper. That road.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
From there to the building that we go in the back.
Okay, that, that helps me.
Twelve percent grade.
That's a visual.
Okay, that helps me tremendously. Thank you. I'm.
I, I was just going to add that sidewalk ramps for ADA accessibility, the maximum is eight percent. So.
Okay.
The ramps that you see, those are at at eight percent.
Okay, thank you. That helps a lot in terms of, uh, you know, getting a concept because a number is a number and I'm not sure what that meant. So, um, okay, and the, um, one other question. Uh, um, you said you had to have one house built on a slab. And is that that one that is very close to the wetlands?
It's the, uh, I think it's the first house on the right going up, uh, Governor's Pride. Yep, right there.
Okay.
Cause it's close to the wetlands and we had to raise the house, uh, above the groundwater. So that's going to be built on a slab.
That, that's going to be built on the slab. Um, okay. Oh, um, lighting. What about lighting?
Well, you know, it's, it's, it's much, many of the lots in the area have already been developed. So our lighting is going to be consistent with what we've already introduced, uh, into other areas of Snowberry that have been built over the last twenty years. So it, if you, if you ever took a ride out there, you'd see there that they're, you know, lamp posts attractive. Um, but it's normal street lighting.
One thing I want to, one, excuse me. One thing I want to say, the lighting is, you know, similar. If you go to Snowberry now, there's no interference with seeing stars from Snowberry with the level of lighting. And it's not, it's going to be consistent with that, I assure you.
Okay, that's good.
The staff has done a great job making sure everything is correct that way.
Okay, just when I hear nine, going by nineteen ninety-one standards and things like that, I just want to, okay, thank you.
Thanks, Liz. Dave?
Um, hi, thanks. Question I had was about cleaning out those filter materials from those separators. The homeowners association's responsible for that.
Yes.
How often does that need to be done? Who, does someone monitor that? That's kind of a question for Shannon, too.
I, I think Andrew would probably answer the maintenance program on those.
I'd have to look at the specific details of it, but it would be the homeowners association. Um, and, uh, sometimes the towns have have required that the, the, the vacuum trucks submit a report to the town. Um, so that that could be done as part of the, the, whether it be through the conservation easement review or the homeowners association documents. Um, um, and they're usually done, uh, at least once a year. And it's done by a vacuum truck. They're accessible, uh, adjacent to the road. And it's done by a vacuum truck. They're accessible, uh, adjacent to the roadway system.
I appreciate that lots and thought about in terms of the water. That's a big part of our job.
And wetlands was absolutely concerned about that and it, and it really did, uh, develop the application.
And how are we? I, I know there were a lot of comments. Uh, I'm seeing like eighty, there were eighty points there. How are we on that?
You know, if I had to quantify it, and I know Shannon probably hasn't had a chance to look at it, but would you say we're seventy-five percent of the way there, Sev?
Um, Seb Bobino, um, eighty comments. We have a response sheet. And, uh, we have a few left with very minor in nature. Um, just to give you an example, uh, sheet S one, S two, we are requested to provide, uh, bearing and distances along the line of a conservation easement. And we didn't want to do that now, uh, before the meeting, just in case there was any changes and then all that work would be wasted. So that's a, a minor thing that we will address. There was, um, easements, the same thing, bearing and distance on the easements. Uh, uh, roof infiltration, uh, Bruce here and Shannon recommended that we look at the possibility to take the runoff from the underground storage and connect it to nearby catch basins or storm manholes. So we want to look at that. If there's an opportunity to do that, we'll do that. So it's a, it's a minor thing. Um, there is a sanitary sewer manhole that we built at the beginning of this project. Um, it's about two hundred feet in and, uh, Bruce wants to see the top of frame and the invert of that to make sure that we're in compliance with that particular elevation, uh, and we will do that. Uh, uh, they want, uh, the staff wants to see a plant mix for the mitigation area and that is, um, something that the soil scientists provided us with. We submitted to the wetlands and it's on the plants. It's just we have to make it a little bit bigger or may have a separate sheet so that you can see it better and the staff can see it better. So it's a minor thing. They want to see the trees location on the map. So we want to spend a little time to look at the utility locations and where the planted trees so it does not interfere with those utilities. So.
Underground, right.
Things that nature, um.
Yeah, I'm actually asking you to address all the points. I'm just asking kind of where we are.
Yeah. So there's probably seventy-five percent and the, the leftover, they're, they're very small in nature in terms of what, how quick can be done and how difficult they are to accomplish.
Thank you.
Just to respond, uh, Andrew Quirk, again, for the record, along those lines, so one of the areas where there's a couple of comments, I think there's two comments that relate to the waiver and the vertical, um, uh, length of the curve. So knowing the direction on that, it would, would, would read the direction that we go to address that, that comment. So there's a couple. It's dependent on whether that waiver is granted for us to address staff's comments, you know, that, that, they, they've brought up the issue, we've applied for the waiver, but, um, that issue would have a ripple effect in terms of the regrading for those lots for the intersection. Um, so there's, there is a little bit of a dynamic component to completing the comments in that regard. Um, the stormwater portion, I've met with staffs, uh, several times and, uh, we've gone over those. I think we're very close. Uh, it's just a matter of, of, um, uh, just some, some minor issues within the stormwater report to address those.
And I guess that's kind of my last question is the waiver piece and that really seeing that and how things are worded here. Is that, is that an actual application? We have an application for a waiver, waiver?
Uh, Attorney Ziogas submitted a letter to formalize the request for the waiver with respect to the, um, profile. So that came in.
No more questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave. Mike?
No questions. Thank you so much for the presentation. Very thorough.
Yeah, I don't have any questions at this time either. So thank you for the, for the presentation. Appreciate it.
We'll, we'll stand pat and see who else is online.
Okay.
Thank you.
So this is a public hearing. Uh, if there's anybody in the room that would like to speak for or against this application, please find your way to the podium. Name and, name and address, please.
Hello. My name's Ralph Passero. I live at Seven Cobble Court, which is, uh, one of the roads in the Farmington West Estates Association. We've lived there. We've been the third house that was built in that development. We've been there eighteen years since two thousand and five. Know Steven very well. Um, I will first say that he builds a great quality house. I mean, the test of time is, um, you know, your best gauge. And, you know, we've been there eighteen years. House has never settled, no, no cracking, no nothing. I mean, um, with normal maintenance and everything else associated with, with a, uh, owning a home is about all we had to do for that. So I give Steven and, um, his builders, uh, and his whole team, uh, a lot of credit for the quality of the homes that they build. The only thing I'd, I'd want to say here, and, uh, how many houses are currently, uh, completed in the development? Give a number?
Questions need to be directed to like.
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Yeah. But how many, how many houses are, are right now, uh, completed in the development?
Well, we're going to collect all these questions and ask him to respond after all the public comment.
Okay. What, what is it?
There's, there's roughly fifty to sixty homes plus the condos.
It's got to be more than that.
Okay. You asked for a number. I guess.
Okay. All right. All right. So.
Can wait till the end and Mr. Barberino returns. Iogas will respond.
Sure. So the concern I have is that, um, the houses that have been built of late, um, are a little different in exterior design, house design, and the exterior authentic of, 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 of the, of the property themselves. As an example, most of the houses that were built there have all cobblestone, um, driveways, cobblestone walkways and cobblestone, uh, steps going into the house. The houses now that, that are being built now have tarred driveways poured or, and, and or poured concrete walkways and prefab steps going into the house. And there always seems to be, uh, an inventory of homes, which in my, um, outlook, um, has, um, impacted the, the value of our homes, uh, as a, because there has been inventory there as opposed to other neighborhoods in Farmington, um, that have, uh, en- enjoyed a much higher, uh, increase in the property value um, than what the houses in Farmington West Estates Association has. I was told originally eighteen years ago that there was going to be a hundred and fifty-eight houses, uh, built in the development. So I'm just curious to find out how many, uh, houses are currently, uh, constructed there. So I, the two new houses that just went up on Snowberry, uh, that I believe are the cornerstones of Governor, this new road that's going in between the south side of Snowberry and the north side of Snowberry. Is that correct? Is that Governor's?
Yes, sir. That's the plan that's on before you on the screen.
Right. That's going to run between the south side of, uh, of Snowberry and the north side of Snowberry.
Correct. There's not a connection to the north side.
Right. It's just going to, it's just going to exit the south side. Are you putting a light there?
A traffic light, sir.
Well, they, and I, I, I say that, um, with a smile on my face because, um, you know, we all exit Snowberry. So if you're going to be putting fifty-eight additional houses on the entrance to Governor's into that section that still needs to be developed, that's a lot of traffic coming in and out of, uh, the development in Snowberry. So I have a concern with that. Um, I, I know that they've put a lot of time and effort into the years of, uh, developing this piece of property. Um, it is a beautiful piece of property. Um, and as I said previously, um, you'll find no better builder. Um, uh, building houses here in, in Farmington, but, uh, the concerns that I did have, uh, I just wanted to, uh, express those because the exterior design has changed, uh, obviously, uh, for cost concerns. Um, obviously a paved driveway is much less expensive than a, a cobblestone, a paved driveway. Um, and, uh, you know, I, I just worry that the, um, the end of, or the, the last third of this development or so is, um, is going to be less pretty than the, uh, than how it started out. And that because of that and offering houses at a a cost structure that is far less than new construction in Farmington, Connecticut, uh, I'm, I'm worried about the long-term value. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in the room?
Good evening, everyone. Excuse me. Thank you for taking my concerns. My name is Catherine O'Sullivan. I live at six sixty Plainville Ave. I am right next, the property right next to Snowberry. Although I have lived there since July fourth, nineteen seventy-seven, um, I have never had any reason to go in Snowberry. So just for reference, where exactly are these homes proposed to be? Is it going to be like opposite Porter's Crossing? Um, I, I don't know.
Want to put that up again, Shannon?
Sure. Aerial maps up. Here's Porter's Crossing.
Okay.
Um, you, I believe you said you're at six sixty?
Yes.
So it's the first, it's the southern leg of Snowberry Lane coming in, and then it's this, on, it's the only undeveloped portion left of Snowberry Cobble.
So it's, it's the greenery that is facing one seventy-seven that has the little sign out that's for, uh,
Correct.
Planting and zoning. That, it's that area. Okay.
Right.
Um, my big, big issue is drainage. Um, my yard is sinking, sinking. And I'll invite anybody to come into my yard, but there are two pipes that run under the road through that development. I have a small swath of land from my property line to the back end of, I believe there's four, five, six single homes. And you can see those pipes and we've had a lot of rain. So naturally the water is going to collect from the weather, but also those pipes, water coming out is collecting in there. That side of my yard is now extremely wet. When I mow the lawn, you can see the tire tracks. I have a septic system. I am not fortunate to be hooked up to the sewer because it just misses my property. I have my septic pumped out four times a year because it has changed the whole water table of my property. The back of my garage has sunk. The front of my garage has cracked. I put in a new driveway six to eight years ago. That is starting to crack. My property has a long history in my late husband's family. It's been in the family since nineteen eighteen. So there's, yes, a lot of changes that have occurred in Farmington and along that road. How much more does the town keep wanting to do and destroy nature? I mean, the gentleman here, I mean, everything looks good on paper until you live it. And I'm living it and it's getting worse. And I was trying to understand, um, of course, you know, G one, F one, this northeast, west, that, you know, those are just words. You need to put it in layman's terms for the rest of us. And he said that there's a pipe going down, collecting in this catch basin, then it goes to the Snowberry and those houses. And I'm saying, are those those pipes that I can see? I really, I invite each one of you to come, come, come to my home. I'll show you exactly where those pipes are. I, I, I mean, this, I, I, I literally will not be able to live there if this keeps happening. I mean, I, I don't know what more I can do. I don't. You know, if, if anybody has an answer for me, um, um, but I mean, having, every time the septic guy comes, I said, geez, you know, I'm like a frequent customer. You need to give me like a discount, you know, multiple visit discount. I mean, that's crazy. He said, it's always high, you have a high water table, high water table. It's always pumping out water, water, water. And it's, it's really destroying my property. I had nine truckloads of dirt that to fulfill in the back of my yard. It's all sunk. The property, it's wetlands. It, no more. Enough is enough. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to go, we're going to check online, see if we have some folks online as well. And we'll hold, we're going to hold response until after we get all the public. Shannon, I don't think there's anybody else left in the room, so.
Okay. Uh, if anyone has called in to offer comment online regarding the ten lot subdivision for Governor's Pride, please raise your hand. And you will be acknowledged to address the commission. But we do have a few hands raised. Uh, Samir Prabhu?
Hello. My name is Samir Prabhu and I'm a resident of F W E, uh, Farmington West Estates. Um, and I appreciate the chance to talk here and, and ask questions. And I appreciate the zoning commission for taking all the effort in, in understanding the quality of construction and the quality of, uh, um, you know, um, uh, the, the impact it has on existing homes. And I also appreciate the questions which were asked prior to mine. So, uh, my home, uh, I live at, uh, thirty-six Snowberry. Um, and I have a question on, uh, stormwater basins, as they call it. Um, again, I'm not an environmental engineer of any sort, so, um, I'm, I'm going to be asking the question in a very layman's terms. Um, so I heard today some numbers thrown out at, uh, as, uh, you know, showing four wa- water basins. Um, well, I live very close to one of them. Uh, so, uh, I have a two-part question. One is, uh, are you going to create three more water basins? Um, and, uh, my question is specifically around the one that's already in place. Um, and, uh, was there any study done on existing construction and considering the gradient you are constructing at, uh, to the runoff that, you know, it can cause to the existing, um, you know, basin, uh, which is on, um, I believe it's a intersection of, uh, Snowberry and, uh, uh, one of the, uh, roads leading into the condos. Um, uh, so that, that's my, uh, one question. And second question is, you know, when are, are these, these four, uh, are these four w- 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 basins or are these two basins? Because there were different numbers thrown, but, um, so I'll, 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 um, a lot, that, that is my question. And I, I thank the, uh, planning and zoning commission for holding this hearing.
Thank you.
Okay. If anyone else has called in, please raise your hand in Zoom. Uh, we do have another hand raised. Uh, Sunil Swamy?
Hi, uh, good evening, everyone. Sunil Swamy. I live at, uh, six sixty Snowberry Lane. Uh, so first of all, thank you, Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, for understanding and bringing this, uh, meeting for us. Uh, I've got a two-part questions. One, the Governor's Pride Lane. This one starts from the south end of the snowbank and goes until the, almost close to the north end. and goes until the almost close to the north end. The entire Farmington West Estate currently has hundred and one single family home. And all most of them open on the Snowberry Lane, which is almost quarter of a mile now. So hundred and one homes, including the private lanes and the Snowberry, they have access to hundred one homes. On the contrary, there are fifty seven new homes coming and they have only two exits and those two exits are all both on the southern end of the Snowberry. What that does, that there are six houses that get sandwiched between those two exits. And consider the fifty seven houses, traffic, at least fifty seven cars or maybe double, will be flowing through that small section of houses. So so there would be a lot of traffic right in front of those houses. Therefore, we request one, my consideration about the traffic on specifically on the south side of the Snowberry. If we can get an access on the north side, which actually, which when we see at the Governor's Pride and it kind of goes right into the north end and there's a house at the end. So if that could be opened up, that will ease some traffic on the south end. That's my one question. The second question is regarding the basin. I heard that Farmington West Estate H O A will take care of the stormwater basins. I'm on the board of the Farmington West Estate H O A. I'm not aware if we were approached, informed or informed about that informed that we would be taking care of this. And if that's the case, we would like to understand how we should plan for it. Secondly, the new basins, those will be constructed and implemented. Is there a minimum time guarantee that this base, those basins will function? For example, fifteen, ten, fifteen, twenty years from now? And if any cost or any any kind of repair incurred in before that time period, who takes care of those? Those are my two questions. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, there's still quite a few people on. If anyone wants to offer comments, please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom. There is another one. Divesh.
Hi, this is Divya Rajkotia. I live at five Cobble Court. This is just a rephrase, but I still wanted to make a point. As as Ralph, my neighbor mentioned, our are the looks of the new houses are not consistent with what currently are. And another thing is I live right across where the Governor's Pride is going to open up. And as Sunil Swamy mentioned, it's going to be a lot of traffic just coming out of the Governor's Pride on the one side, and that's going to cause a lot of traffic, not just the cars, but there's going to be a lot of trucks like Amazon trucks, FedEx, UPS. So definitely it's going to increase a lot of traffic. Thanks. Just want to make those two points.
Thank you.
If anyone else has called in to offer comment regarding the Governor's Pride application, please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom. And you will be acknowledged to address the commission.
Are you able to hear me?
Samir, yes, we are.
Okay, sorry, I thought I would go immediately on mute. So I'll wait for my turn. I have one more question, you know, pigtailing into what Sunil was asking about the four basins.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, so there is a, so it's a concern to me. Yes, Sunil was right that, you know, there was a comment made that, you know, the four basins will automatically be handled by the homeowners association. Based on what? I mean, why? This would increase my monthly fees and why would I incur additional monthly fees for maintaining for additional basins? And the question is really, did we, did the, was the planning and zoning commission made aware by the builder that there are hundred and home, a hundred and one homes already built? And that fifty eight new homes are going to be built, which may be in different in design to existing homes, which you know, ultimately would impair, negatively impact the the price of my home. Thank you.
Thank you.
If anyone else has called in to offer comment on Governor's Pride, please raise your hand. Mr. Chair, at this time, there is no hands raised.
Thanks, Shannon.
I'll do my best. I think right now, I think one of the speakers indicated it was a hundred and one homes built and about fifty seven homes remaining. And that's, that's, that's pretty close to the numbers that that we're looking at. There are a hundred and one homes that have already been constructed. So that is certainly consistent. As far as the the exterior design of the homes, you know, again, there's, there are no regulations that dictate what color your house should be or, you know, what what the design is. And sure, it's morphed a little bit over the years because of costs, because of maintenance. You know, in the old days, we all had cedar, cedar shakes and cedar siding. And then I realized you had to paint it every five years. And then after twenty years, you realize you had to replace it. And then you realize that maybe vinyl made a lot more sense. And that's, and that's what happens as as time goes on, we become a little smarter. And so the designs have changed slightly. Paving the driveways has been maintenance, better maintenance. And that's why that that takes place. As far as Catherine O. Sullivan is concerned, I refresh my memory, but I thought that the last time we had a six lot subdivision on Whitetail, she came as well. And it was important to note that her yard is to the east of one seventy seven. We're on the west side of one seventy seven. The water actually flows from east to west.
No, she's on the same side.
She's on the same side.
Diogus.
Yeah, okay. Okay, another woman did. I'm sorry. I apologize. But the water does flow from east to west. And the water that's coming off of one seventy seven has never been accounted for by the state. And that's really the reason that the first detention basin is being built is to handle the water coming from one seventy seven. So that's what we're attempting to do. There are two additional basins being added to the site. I think Andrew can talk about that in a little bit and we can address that for you. As far as traffic, well, traffic study was presented at the time the application was originally submitted for the affordable housing zone. That was one of the primary issues that went up on appeal to the Superior Court. And again, I submitted the decision for you, but it did deal with the aspects of traffic and then and that traffic situation has been resolved and it's been certified by a court and it's it's part of the record. So that that won't change. Maintenance of the basins will be in association, responsibility in the final analysis. What we've been doing and what we've done up now is that the developer has been responsible for maintaining the existing basin on the property. We will continue to maintain the existing basins and the new basins until the project is completed. One of the questions you said was how long? Well, we started in nineteen, what, ninety seven? And here we are, thirty years later, still working. So until the final house is built, the developer is responsible for those basins. When it's done, they get turned over to the association and the association dues will then be providing long term maintenance expenses. So they have the opportunity between now and then to create quite a reserve for maintenance purposes by adding a little bit to your budget for detention basins. But that's, that's the nature of condominium living, so to speak. This is a a project that involves condos, involves HUD property, not HUD, but HUD properties. And there's an association that goes along with it. When you buy our house, you agree to be part of the association and that's what comes with it. So Andrew, if you want to talk about the detention basins a little bit.
Andrew Quirk, again, for the record, I'll just be really quick, but page three of of the presentation PDF that I had, just to clarify on the numbers, there are two stormwater basins. So that's, that's the two part component. The four is the those units again for water quality. There's four storm scepters. So I know there was some confusion on the numbers in terms of what each one applies to, but stormwater basins are outlined in green, the yellow areas to the northeast and southwest. And then I highlighted with revision clouds around the location of the four storm scepters, which are on the surface, they look like a manhole. They're just, they're underground units for treatment of the water. And then again, on the maintenance, the maintenance schedules are part of the plans. You know, adding these homes is adding people that are then also contributing to that overall maintenance. So I'm not sure what the overall impact would be, but it would be like everything in the association is proportional. But it is the intent that the maintenance plan that we have on the plans be implemented by the homeowners association after the completion of all the phases and that's in place. I think that was it for me.
And Seb just wanted me to comment that there are two exits on Snowberry. It's not just the one exit on the on the south side. There's one on the south side and on the north side. So it disperses the traffic. Thank you, Commissioners. We appreciate it.
Any questions, burning questions left, Commissioners? I have one quick one, I think. Is it one homeowners association for the current hundred and one houses or there?
Yeah, the 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 affordable have a separate.
Okay.
There's two associations, but the single family homes in the market based ones are Farmington West Associates. The other one is Cobble. I forgot the name, but there are two.
Okay, appreciate it. Thank you for clarifying.
So and just to be clear, there's approximately ninety four affordable units.
Okay, thanks, Shannon. That's helpful, too. All right, Commissioners, I think the recommendation here is given.
Chair, there's two hands raised there from individuals that have already spoken this evening. So it's, you know, certainly.
Yes, we'll go ahead and
Okay.
Take their calls.
Samir, you want to go ahead and unmute?
Sorry, are you able to hear me? I was struggling to find the unmute button. Are you able to hear me? Yes, so with respect to, I don't know the gentleman who was speaking, but I apologize. But there was a comment made that the builder is responsible for maintaining the existing basin and will maintain the 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 two new basins that are going to be built. Will the builder be able to submit what their maintenance plan is, annual maintenance plan for the existing basin? Because my home is very close to the existing basin. And what the plan is for the two new basins on an annual basis while the builder is building it? So we know the expenses. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and Sunil?
Yes, thank you. I think it was Mr. Bobinoff who just mentioned that there are two openings of the new new construction that are coming up. And he mentioned north and south. I wanted to make sure, did he mean east and west, which is on the Snowberry? There are two openings on the south side of the Snowberry. What I was requesting is an opening on the north side of the Snowberry. So I wanted to clarify that is there an opening on the north side of Snowberry or not?
Yeah, the this proposal does not have a connection into the north leg of Snowberry. The you are correct, the two legs of Governor's Pride both connect into the south leg of Snowberry only.
Okay, and one request to Mr. Bobinoff, he mentioned that he has lost a few lots because of taking care of his property. And we will request, you know, that if he can lose one more and open this Governor's Pride on the north side, that will give a lot of relief. Thank you.
Thank you.
What was the first question? I forgot already.
I think Shannon answered the first one, right?
For this, the other was the responsibility for
Oh, yeah.
Oh, right.
The maintenance plan is on.
And the maintenance plan and
Yes.
The schedule, et cetera.
Yeah, the maintenance plan is located on your on your prints. So it's it's in place already. You have a maintenance plan for those detention basins.
Thank you. All right, so given the timing of the engineering comments being responded to and such, I think the recommendation is to continue this to the June tenth. Everybody in agreement? To our June tenth meeting?
Can we close the public hearing?
No.
No.
No, if they have any information that comes in or anything changes, you've got to be able to enter it into the record.
Yeah.
Okay.
So can we get a motion in a second to continue, please?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, if I just might get a direction from the commission with respect to the waiver, it'll help us in responding to some of these comments. Is it the consensus that the waiver would be adequate and approved and then we can design our plans accordingly? Is that?
So you can offer a consensus. So there's two, there's two elements. The waiver is solely for the three percent grade. Staff doesn't really have an issue with the three percent. It's the rest of it. The eight percent. And the K, the very short vertical curve. So we're suggesting that perhaps it was going to require an offline meeting between staff and the applicant in order to rectify this.
Yep.
So that's our position on it. But I think it's going to require an off, an offline meeting. If we can't come to a consensus, then Mr. Seer will be joining us at the next meeting.
Okay.
I think does that sort of answer your question?
It it gives us a nudge.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, the three percent is what had been agreed to originally.
Yeah.
It was three to six.
Yep.
And now we've changed and gone three to eight. And that's the concern.
We'll deal, we'll deal with it and we'll talk about it at the next meeting. So we'll have revised plans for you.
Sounds good.
Thank you. Thank you all.
So we still need a motion and a
Yeah, a motion in a second to continue. Yep.
I'd like to make a motion to continue the application for a ten lot subdivision of Governor's Pride of Snowberry Lane, Phase six A, age zone by Farmington West Estates Limited Partnership. Second. June tenth?
Standing.
Till June tenth.
I'll second it now.
Jump the gun. All those in favor? I opposed. Motion passes. Thanks, everybody.
Thanks.
All right.
Get back to this on June ten. All right.
Yeah, this is more like that they're like than what you've had so far.
Oh, good night. Thank you.
Good night.
All right, so I have, I think, a relatively easy planner's report. If needed, I have Kyle Richards on the phone, who is the developer for the project, as well as attorney Tim Hollister. You'll recall was the legal counsel for this application. Sixteen hundred New Britton Avenue is the affordable housing project that came through at the end of last year. They were successful in their CHFA application and funding. As part of that, and you'll recall, they are providing services. Excuse me one minute.
Thank you.
Okay, take two. So part of the part of the community that will be taking advantage of this development is the Favar, the Ark of Farmington Valley and their supportive services. As part of their review of the layout and the, the programmatic operational end of these buildings, it has required, really, that the, rather than having two separate buildings with a courtyard, really, their need is one consolidated building with a central corridor and an elevator in order to best serve the needs of the individuals that they know they are going to need to place here. And in order to provide the appropriate supportive services for those individuals. So what you see on the screen and what is in gray underneath is the original. And in red over top is the new. So the two building, the center back building and the southwest building were two separate buildings, eight units with a central courtyard. They will now be one consolidated building, still two stories. So the, the massing is the same. There will be twenty units in each rather than sixteen in each. So this has been balanced out. The two corner at the north, let me get this right here. The northeast and southeast corners. I gotta get the north arrow on the right spot and get my mouth to work the right way. Northeast and southeast corners, both of those buildings have been reduced from eight unit to four unit buildings to offset the increase with the two larger buildings. So there is no net increase to the total unit count. The math all works out. If I said it correctly, it does. I know it does. So.
We believe you. We follow you.
So you followed it fabulous. That's great. So as noted in the agenda review, there's no change to the unit mix. There's no change to the affordability and the structure that had been put on the record. So twenty percent market, eighty percent affordable at varying levels. Unit count stays the same. The parking count or, and the configuration, all other elements of the plan stay the same. The impervious coverage, there's probably an offset. You lose the courtyard here. But the building offsets are smaller footprints. So there's really no net change there. No change to stormwater, no change to landscaping. There's still a connection at the back. So basically, it was just a, a change driven in order to support the need for the, the Favar community. There are no other changes to the plan. If the commission is agreeable, then we can address this just as we are this evening under planners' report administratively, they'll be allowed to continue. I don't really see this rising to the need of a formal site plan and other application, et cetera. Correct? We're all good. I'm getting a lot of head nods. It seems, it doesn't, it doesn't translate on a recording.
Yes, Shannon.
Sounds like a good idea, yes.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I'm sorry, excuse me, Rogia.
Just out of curiosity, Shannon, this has nothing to do with, because you, you said here, people with intellectual disabilities. Is, is that the new phrase for mental illness? People with intellectual disability?
No, I think it's two different. Those, perhaps at times, it's the same thing, but no, the, so
It's more like, like, intellectual.
So typically, like at birth disability, like it's an at birth disability.
Oh, okay.
So, but, so, yes. I, I don't know how to appropriately. I don't know all the politically correct terms, unfortunately, so.
Down syndrome and?
On that idea, yes. Yep, and various others, and intellectual disabilities and, and physical disability. So it's both.
Thanks.
Yes. Yes, that's the need for the elevator and, and just Yes, they do have a support. And that's part of the driving need to have the, the central corridor and the elevator. I don't necessarily, I, I don't know if it's twenty-four hour staff, but whatever, they did need the central corridor just for access to any of the individuals should they need assistance. Okay.
Thanks.
Yes.
Awesome.
Yes.
Fabulous. Okay.
Glad that went through and they got that funding.
Yeah, the funding is, was huge. So, all right. Well, Mr. Richards will be happy. Need to say anything. So, good night, Kyle. Thank you.
Yeah, he'll be happy and go to bed now.
All right. And I do not have anything else from a planner's report or show and tell for this evening on my end.
Okay. Any questions from anyone for Shannon? Would anybody like to make a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the May something, May sixth meeting?
Sure, I haven't said the May seventh meeting. I'd like to make, like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the May sixth, twenty twenty-four Town Plan and Zoning Commission meeting.
Second. All those in favor? Aye, opposed. Meeting is adjourned.